Welcome to the Town of Cordera Madera Planning Commission Meeting for Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. Adam, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Commissioner Metcalf?
Here.
Commissioner Bundy?
Here.
Commissioner Chase?
Here.
Commissioner Bendel?
Here.
And Commissioner Rizzo?
You're muted, Jim.
Rizzo, you're on mute.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. At this point in every meeting, we open the meeting to public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. So if you have a comment about something you'd like to post, please take three minutes. I'll have timer for that tonight. But you have three minutes to comment for something which is not on the agenda. So this will mean that you either raise your hand on the Zoom window, or you've sent in an email to Tracy. Tracy can give you that email address.
It is publiccomment@tcnmail.org.
We have anybody raising their hand?
I do not see any raised hands and I do not see any emails. Let me check junk, please. One moment. Doesn't look like we have anyone wishing to speak at this time.
Okay. So we'll let a couple of beats pass here. And then we will close the public comments section of tonight's meeting. So you had your moment in the sun, so we'll close public comment. And what we'll do is we'll go directly to our first new hearing item, which is 403 Chapman Drive tonight. So 403 Chapman Drive is a design review application, number PL 2020 0018, for the demolition of two existing residences and a carport with a roof deck and the construction of a new 2,582 square foot two-story residence with a 626 attached garage and storage area at 403 Chapman Drive. So I believe the presentation for this will be made by Martha.
Tracy, can you enable me to share my screen, please? Yes. Tracy, good to go. Okay. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Chase and members of the commission. This evening you will be considering a design review application for a new two-story residence at 403 Chapman Drive. The applicants also proposed to construct a 721 square foot detached accessory dwelling unit on the property. And consistent with state law and the town's AD ordinance, the proposed ADU will not be reviewed as part of this design review application. The project site is located at 403 Chapman Drive in the Chapman Park neighborhood. There are three residences located adjacent to the project site, which includes 407 Chapman to the north, 401 Chapman to the east, and 8 Stetson Avenue, which is located across from a 10-foot wide town-owned path. And 8 Stetson Avenue is owned by the applicant. There are additionally, single-family homes located west of the project site, across from Chapman Drive and Stetson Avenue. The project site is developed with two existing residences that total just over 1,900 square feet. There's also a detached carport garage structure that's 410 square feet and has a roof deck. The structure is a non-conforming structure and is located in the north side yard setback and the front setback. As part of the project, the applicant proposes to demolish the three structures. The site slopes upward in an easterly direction, and it also slopes upward to a lesser degree in a northerly direction. And the low point of the site is the southwest corner and the high point is the northeast corner. And Marin Maps lists the average slope as 28%. The project site is zoned R1, medium-density residential. And the proposed project meets the various development standards of the R1 district, including the setbacks, lot coverage, floor area, height, and parking. The allowable lot coverage and floor area for the site is 40%. And the applicant's proposal for lot coverage is 32.8%, which is inclusive of the accessory dwelling unit. And the proposed floor area ratio is 36.1%, which is also inclusive of the accessory dwelling unit. And the town's or AD ordinance does allow for an 800 square foot square foot exceedance of lot coverage and floor area for purposes of constructing an ADU. And the applicant is not taking advantage of that allowance. This shows the site plan. The primary residence is located kind of in the front portion of the lot, and then the accessory dwelling unit is located to the east. The front setback ranges from just over 20 feet to 23 feet 10 inches. The north side yard setback proposed is 10 feet 9 inches, where 10 feet is required. The rear setback is 56 feet, where 25 feet is required. The south side setback is 12 feet, where 10 feet 6 inches is required. And the project includes two courtyards. The first courtyard is the front entry courtyard. And then there's also a courtyard proposed in between the primary residence and the accessory dwelling unit. The applicant proposes an outdoor and entertaining space located in the southern portion of the site. This includes a trellis feature that is just over 220 square feet. It also includes outdoor furniture and lighting. And the trellis is located 45 feet to the rear setback and 10 feet 6 inches to the south side setback. There's also a trash enclosure that's proposed in the southern portion of the site. And the trash enclosure has a setback of 7 feet 8 inches. The proposed first floor plan includes the portion of the living area, which includes two bedrooms, a laundry room, mechanical storage room, and elevator and stairs. There's also a 626 square foot attached garage and storage area on the lower level. And a portion of this lower level is subterranean and is not counted towards floor area. And this red line differentiates what is included and what is not included. So everything above the red line is excluded from floor area. Proposed second floor plan is just over 1,700 square feet, and it includes an entry, a great room with a kitchen, a bedroom with a closet and bath, and a half bath. The proposed structure is a two-story residence that includes a partial basement. The house is tucked into the hillside and it appears as a one-story structure from the rear. The residence is a Spanish colonial design. And proposed materials include smooth white stucco, paracotta tile roof, metal-clad windows, copper gutters, wood entry doors and garage doors, and iron balconies and railings. And this is the proposed color and materials, which was included as attachment to your staff report. The west elevation faces Chapman. This elevation includes an entry staircase. There are also two balconies proposed on the front elevation. And there are very extensive windows of varying sizes and shapes. And the maximum height proposed on this elevation is 30 feet, which is the chimney. And the height of the ridge is just over 25 feet. The south elevation faces 8 Stetson. And this elevation shows both the primary residence and the accessory dwelling unit as well. The height of the primary residence varies from 13 feet to 25 feet. And there are two windows proposed on the upper level. You can also see the trash room on this elevation. And the trash room has a height of 8 feet 4 inches. And the materials of this trash enclosure match that of the residence. It is also located behind a fence, so will not be readily visible from the street. The north elevation faces 407 Chapman. And again, this elevation shows both the primary residence and the accessory dwelling unit. The height ranges from 14 feet to 20 feet. And then there's also a chimney on this elevation, which is setback approximately 15 feet from the northern wall plane. And the height of that chimney is 27 feet. And there are four windows proposed on the upper level of this elevation, and then one window on the lower level. The east elevation faces the rear yard. This has a maximum height of 13 feet. And again, it's facing that interior, that courtyard in the middle portion of the lot. And this elevation includes a window and a door. The proposed project proposes to remove two permit-sized trees that have a circumference greater than 50 inches at breast height. It includes 151-inch coast redwood and a 54-inch English elm. And the town's consulting arborist prepared an arborist report for the removal of the coast redwood tree. The arborist's report notes that the tree is approximately 100 years old and it has been previously topped. The branches on this tree are overextended and are prone for failure. And it's noted that the critical root zone of this tree extends approximately 12 feet. And the coast redwood is located 2 and 1/2 feet from both the proposed primary residence and the accessory dwelling unit. The applicant proposes to remove a total of 10 trees from the site, two of which are permit-sized trees. The applicant proposes to attain a 40-inch circumference oak tree in the southeast portion of the site. And the applicant also proposes to relocate a 75-inch circumference palm tree to the rear of the property. The applicant is proposing to plant 38 new trees, which includes 27 15-gallon trees, 7 24-inch box trees, 2 36-inch box trees, and 2 48-inch box trees. Extensive planting is proposed along the northern property boundary to provide screening and privacy between the project site and 407 Chapman. And the landscape plan in this portion of the site includes two 48-inch box coast live oak trees, seven 24-inch box Marina strawberry trees, and one 15-gallon red bud tree. In addition, native shrubs, including California coffee berry, toyon, and manzanita, are also proposed in this portion of the site. And the planting along the border emphasizes deer-resistant, drought-resistant, and fire-resistant flora. This slide shows some of the landscape elements that are proposed. As I mentioned, there are two courtyards that are proposed, a lower courtyard and an upper courtyard. And the applicant is proposing a fountain in each courtyard. The upper fountain has a height of 3 feet. And the fountain on the lower left-hand corner, which is proposed in the upper courtyard, has a height of 5 feet 6 inches. The fence on the right-hand side is what is proposed along the southern property border. The applicant proposes a stone retaining wall that has a maximum height of 4 feet 4 inches, and then a 6-foot-tall wrought iron fence. There also is stairs proposed in the southern portion of the site. And the applicant is proposing planting in between the retaining wall and the iron fence. The entry wall that's proposed in the front of the property has a maximum height of 3 feet. And the materials are consistent with the primary residence. It's a white stucco with tiled stone. And then the picture on the lower right-hand corner is a precedent image of the trellis. And this trellis is just over 220 square feet. It has a maximum height of 9 feet. As part of the project, the neighbors conducted extensive outreach. Before they submitted their application, they met with their four immediate neighbors. And they also sent letters to five additional neighbors. Following the middle of the design review application, there were an additional nine meetings. And the applicants met with the neighbors at 364 Chapman, 401 Chapman, 407 Chapman, and 158 Stetson Avenue. Three neighbors provided letters of support for the project, which includes 364 Chapman, 381 Chapman, and 401 Chapman. The neighbor to the north, 407 Chapman, provided a letter of opposition. And the letter cited concerns related to the removal of the redwood tree, loss of privacy and shade, proposed color and materials of the residence, the relocation of the PG&E power line, the adjoining property lines, and the location of the driveway. And additionally, this evening, the town received comments from 158 Stetson, located east of 401 Chapman. And that letter outlined concerns with the sanitary sewer and then also with the construction hours. And the letters of support and the comment letters, the letters of opposition, were included as attachments to the staff report. This slide shows the surrounding residences that are in the immediate vicinity of the project site. On the upper left-hand corner is 364 Chapman, located to the west. The lower left-hand corner is 158 Stetson, located to the east. In the middle is 401 Chapman, located to the north. The upper right-hand corner is 401 Chapman, located to the east. And the lower right-hand corner is 8 Stetson Avenue, which is located to the south. In order for the planning commission to approve the project, the commission must make the required eight design review findings. Staff is able to make these findings, and there's a thorough analysis in the staff report and resolution. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the findings. And staff recommend that the planning commission approve the 2020 010 resolution approving the demolition of the two existing structures and carport and the construction of a new 2,582 square foot residence with a 626 square foot attached garage and storage area at 403 Chapman. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Martha. At this point, we can open it up to commissioner questions. So it's be brief if we're going to grill Martha on anything. So we'll start with... Jim, do you have any questions for Martha at this point?
Yes, I have just a few questions. I know that... So I'm new to the commission, so I just wanted to... I just wanted to understand, there's a lot of utility items on this particular... In some of the letters of concern. And I was just wondering if these things are in our discretion? Or is this something that is... gets taken on at a later date with the building and public works department? Or is that something that we need to look at tonight?
So there are several issues that are raised that are more civil issues between the property owners. One is the shed and lot lines, and then also a PG&E relocation. And then also the sanitary sewer comments. The applicant is required to replace their sanitary sewer. It's consistent with an ordinance that requires prevailing sewer laterals to be replaced. And there are some impacts to the adjacent neighbors as a result of this. And if you have specific questions about that, the applicant would be the best person to answer those. But there are some issues that are outside of the planning commission's review.
And do we know what rooms on 407 Chapman, who's voicing most of the concerns about privacy? Do we know what rooms are being serviced by that adjacent area to the property line that are going to be facing a new structure? Has that been...
There are bedrooms in that portion of the site. You know, the distance between the two structures is about 36 feet between the residence at 407 Chapman and then the proposed residence at 403 Chapman.
So the majority of their living space without being in there, probably on the other side of the house, facing the open space? How do you get a grasp of the privacy issues?
I believe it's primarily bedrooms. But if I'm mistaken, I know that Susan Huberty is on this call, and she can correct me as part of the public comments.
Okay. Great. Okay. And I know you and I had talked earlier, and you're not aware of any easements or covenants for the utilities that cross over the property for the PG&E lines or the sewer lines currently?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
With that said, Martha, regarding the distance, what is the vertical separation roughly?
Oh, between the property at 407 Chapman is at a higher elevation. I would say several feet, 3 to 5 feet.
Okay. All right. All right. Margaret, do you have any questions for Martha?
I do. Just, could you clarify for me first the rear yard setback of 56 feet? Does that include the ADU or exclude the ADU?
So the 56-foot setback is for the primary residence. The applicant is proposing a 25-foot setback for the accessory dwelling unit, which exceeds what's required by ADU law. The minimum setback is 4 feet for the rear and the side. And the applicant has elected to meet the setbacks of the underlying zoning district, which is 25 feet for the rear.
And do you... I wasn't quite getting where the maximum height was measured. I understand that it's 30 feet of the chimney, the ridge line is 25 feet. But if you're standing on the sidewalk on Chapman, looking up at the house, what is the height of the house?
So...
Sidewalk in front?
So those heights are from the finished grade, which is how we measure height. You know, the street is at a lower elevation, so it will appear, you know, slightly taller.
And that's what my concern is. So what is that height? Do you know?
I don't know. I'm sure that the architect could answer that.
Okay. And I assume that the fire department reviewed part of the landscaping plan?
They did. And then there's also a condition of approval that they'll do a more thorough analysis as part of the building permits supplemental, and that it needs to meet, you know, a variety of standards and regulations. For example, they're not allowed to have planting within 5 feet of a structure. So that'll be analyzed as part of the building permit.
Okay. And then in one of the letters I read, or in something that I read, the driveway being close to the intersection, that issue was brought up. And I noticed when I went there, that's a very sharp turn. And it did strike me as being dangerous if you had to move right into a driveway. And what... who studies that?
So it's the public works department that studies that. So the public works department reviewed the project when it was initially submitted. And then when that comment was raised, I had the engineer take another look at that intersection. And there was a condition of approval that was added that limits the height of any improvements 10 feet from the roadway to a maximum height of 30 inches to address concerns with visibility of that intersection.
And then the other issue that I noticed, which is near and dear to my heart, because I live on a hillside, is the water flow. And removing trees, what happens to the water flow down that hillside?
Well, as part of the project, the applicant is proposing to add quite a bit of landscaping and trees, which will help, you know, absorb water and make sure that there isn't erosion. So that is something that they've addressed through their landscape plan.
Okay. And I guess, I just want to get the parameters of what we're going to do today. Because the biggest issue that I was reading with the neighbors is the removal of that redwood tree, which also, I mean, it seems to me that it's an issue that the staff report didn't really deal with.
Well, as part of the project, the arborist conducted an assessment of the tree and...
In that... I mean, I read the arborist's report. I'm just saying, did the staff just accept that as being okay? Or where in your staff report did you study that part of it?
Well, we analyzed the arborist's report. And then as part of the project, the applicant proposes a very extensive planting along the northern border. That staff looked at and analyzed, you know, the loss of redwood would result in a loss of privacy to the neighbors. So we are analyzing the proposed landscape plan to make sure that privacy would be restored through the revised planting, which staff feels that it is.
So is it only the privacy issue that is concerned with the redwood tree?
No, there's, you know, a variety of factors that are analyzed. There's attachment nine was included, which are the factors that the director looks at when he is evaluating removal of a tree. And it is, you know, you're looking at both the benefits that the tree provides and then also, you know, weighing the impacts of the tree as well. So it, you know, it's, there's pluses and minuses to removing any tree. And it's something that's analyzed by the director, or in this case, you, the commissioners.
And I think it's on page, just to clarify, page 13, and I think of the staff report, which is the discussion section of the staff report, is where it gets into that analysis that Martha was just speaking about.
I read it, and I also noticed that the arborist's report is repeated three different places in the whole...
I believe the applicants attached the arborist's report. And then I think the... I don't know, I just remember it being in there twice. I don't remember it being in there three times.
Three times. But, okay. I mean, I have other issues, but we can move on for now.
Thank you, Margaret. Dr. Bundy, you have some questions for staff at this point?
Yes, Martha, I also had concerns about the arborist's report. It's the first time that I'd seen a fire-prone in relationship to a redwood tree. And I think in delving into it, and what Kent was saying in regard to that, that the situation that the tree finds itself in is that it's got bamboo underneath it. It hasn't been maintained, pruned. It has overextended limbs and broken limbs, as well as a lot of understory. And this is what creates a fire danger associated with the redwood, not the redwood tree itself. And if these other factors were corrected, it would be a healthy redwood tree that would withstand fire. And then the issue comes down to, could the project be done with the redwood tree in place? But I didn't want to sort of defend the redwood tree from the standpoint that I don't think it's by its own nature that fire-prone. The other issue that I just wanted to ask was in regard... I know the applicants are working with the neighbor at 401 about reworking that pathway. What do they have to do in relationship to approval from the town to work on that public easement, which is in need of work? I applaud them for taking that on to improve the access.
Yeah, so the applicants have been in touch with the public works director about making improvements. And the improvements to that path would require a licensing agreement through the town and would be reviewed by the public works department, since, you know, the town owns that 10-foot-wide path.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Phyllis, questions for staff?
Are we going to be discussing the tree now, or is that going to be discussed later?
I would like to just keep it to questions for Martha, if possible.
Okay. Just one question then, having to do with the water flow and the removal of the trees. You mentioned landscaping. Has any discussion come up about making the use of a French drain as part of the landscaping after the removal of the trees?
I think the applicant would be better suited to answer that question. Their landscape architect is on the call, and I know that's something they've looked at.
Okay, fine. Thank you. That's the only question I had, Peter.
Okay. Thank you, Phyllis. Martha, in the staff report and through the tree report, it talks about the root zone being 12-foot in any direction from the tree itself. So when we spoke the other day, I commented that other municipalities have larger root protection zones. Were you able to clarify anything on that front?
Yeah, so I did speak with the arborist. You know, he indicated those roots in the 12-feet zone are really the roots that need to be protected at all time. And damaging those roots could result in compromising the tree. He did indicate that a portion of the roots that are further from 12 feet could be removed, and it wouldn't result in the tree being damaged. And, you know, if the tree were to be retained based on direction from the commission, then any digging or excavation that occurs within, you know, the area of the redwood tree would require an arborist to be on-site to watch. And then there would be a variety of protections put in place for the tree. But it, you know, the tree, the area that's impacted by the tree is about 400 square feet, which extends into both the proposed primary residence and also into the proposed... which extends into both the proposed primary residence and also into the proposed accessory dwelling unit as well.
Okay, so that's a semicircle of approximately twenty-four, twenty-eight feet with a forty-eight inch circumference. So that, or diameter, so, or twenty-six feet, maybe. In any case, that's a semicircle that extends out into the property by at least fourteen feet from the redwood tree.
And, you know, the the tree is located about eleven feet from that northern property boundary. So it essentially, it's located basically, you know, where the the side yard setback ends.
Okay, pertinent to Mr. Rizzo's questions of these items that we are considering tonight, the shed, the PG&E utilities and the sanitary sewer, those are all part of other processes in the town. Is that correct?
That is correct. And, you know, the, for instance, the the PG&E issue, there's not an easement for the the current line. And I know the 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 applicants have been working with the neighbor and PG&E on a relocation of this line. But it's an issue that the town has has not been too involved in.
Right, okay, so they're all outside of our purview, and the redwood tree is in our purview, so.
Correct.
Okay, that's great. I would like to then move on and invite the presentation from the client, or not the client, the applicant, presumably, whoever is going to speak first for the applicant. If that is the Fosters, then so be it.
Great. I'm not sure if you can hear me. May I ask that Ms. Hagerdy turn on our microphone?
I should be able to hear you, if everyone could confirm.
Share the screen? Possible? We'd like to make a visual presentation while we talk.
You should, yeah, you should be able to share.
Very good, thank you. Hopefully, you should be able to see our screen.
We can.
Yes.
Excellent. Well, greetings, and we're delighted to address you this evening, commissioners. We want to thank you for the time that you've taken to dedicate to us to this evening and also to review our project. I know it's been a lengthy affair. We also really want to thank Martha, who has been working on this project for the better part of, I think, nine, ten months, and has really helped us think about how to make the project compliant and fit in with the requirements of the code and the neighborhood. So thank you to you all. We're really excited to be here and share a labor of love with you, which is the project we propose for four-three Chapman Drive. I'm Andrew Foster.
I'm Michelle Foster. And before we get started, we did have two requests. First, we wanted to request that we have an opportunity to address any public comments, should any be made. And also, due to the numerous issues surrounding the property, we would like to request the opportunity to speak for up to twenty minutes. Hopefully, we don't take that long, but we 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 may. So we wanted to make those two requests before we began.
That's usually the time limit we apply, and that's just fine. So please proceed, yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. Well, we are going to hear from from us tonight, as well as our architect, Tom Meany of Santa Barbara, and our landscape architect, Joni Janeky, and associates of Santa Cruz. A quick word about us. Michelle's a native of California, having grown up in Sacramento Delta region. I fell in love with her and therefore relocated from Oregon to the California, to California. And I've resided here since ninety-two. We moved to Corder Madara in two thousand and five. We've been raising three daughters here, two of which were born here, and and the first of which came at age one. And they've gone through the local school system here. Two of them are actually still in local schools right now. We do work locally in Larkspur at a small business that we run together, where Michelle's the CEO. And we employ fifteen people there. We do reside, as Martha mentioned, at eighty Stetson Avenue, which is directly south of the project site. Why are we doing this project? We had a very fortunate opportunity to purchase an immediately that had long ago fallen into terrible damage there that would be suitable from Shell's parents to relocate in their older age so that they could be closer for us for their care. I really just didn't want to lose my wife driving up to Sacramento to look after her, her wife, each and every day, or her mother, excuse, and and parents each and every day as they aged. So we took advantage of this opportunity. We do hope to retain the property for the long term. We even have some vague visions that one of our daughters might choose to live there. I don't know if that will occur, but we hope. But above all, we're trying to create a tasteful and compliant residence with high-quality materials that really, and native landscaping that fits well into the neighborhood in a manner that will beautify and enhance it. As Martha's already gone through our project in a lot of detail, we're really not showing anything new, but we would just state that the existing structures on the side are are from green when they were planted there. They're in terrible disrepair. We suspect they're not habitable and would probably be condemned if if that action was undertaken or review was undertaken. We're trying to create, I think, a much more tasteful residence, as depicted at the top of the screen. Why I'm so interested in the Spanish colonial style was something we've been passionate about for two decades. We fell in love with the style with respect to the state's history, and we really love the aesthetic appeal of it. So it's a very personal and emotional thing for us to choose this style. But we also do really value the thermal insulation that is naturally afforded by thicker, stucco walls, the energy efficiency as well, and fire-resistant qualities of the walls and the and the roofing. So it's it's, we think it has both of those advantages that are both ancient and modern. We think we've implemented the style relatively tastefully. Eight Stetson, the house was halfway there when we moved in, and we made some adjustments. Re-tiling the roof a bit, but the, and we know the style has a long history in the town. Our own research suggested that the town hall itself was constructed in Spanish colonial style when it was originally made. It is a as well as some prominent homes in the area and in private residences. For for this reason, we hired Tom Meany, who you'll hear from in just a moment, who's a noted architect from Santa Barbara, who's a specialist in specialist many things, but especially Spanish colonial style. Here's a quick run-through of what we've done with our house. And just for a trip down memory lane, here's what the fire station looked like when it was originally built in nineteen thirty-one, and then later converted into town hall. You can still, I guess, make out some of the original outlines, even though much has changed and much more will change. Here are the facades that I was referring to in downtown Corder Madara and some of the private residences that we draw on us from for inspiration. But I'm going to turn it over to Tom to talk about our design process.
Yes, so my intention going in was basically to have a house that is compatible with the neighborhood in terms of scale. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, because we had some audio problems with with Andrew, so make sure that I'm okay. It fits with the with the scale of the neighborhood, is not overbuilt to the site. Because that's one of the things I like about the neighborhood is it's a really nice, small scale. So that was paramount for us in terms of how we, how I was handling the project. So basically, when you see from the street facade, it's this two-story house. There's only one place where the gable runs perpendicular to to the to the topography. And so there's only one place where you have a gable facing the street. And the other areas along the property, for example, these two-bedroom windows adhered to the side. The actual floor level is about three or four feet below grade. So the house is really nestled in, even with the daylighting basement qualities of it. The vast majority of the downhill side of the house is below the grade on the downhill side of the house. The the rest of the ridge runs parallel to the contour lines. When you're looking up at the house from the street, for example, you're not even going to see the majority of the roof because it's going to be descending, or rather, ascending away from your sight lines. You're just going to see the height of the two-story facade. But we've tried to articulate like that with balconies, a projecting stair, some offsets in terms of the massing of the building. So it's really going to have a lot of texture to it. Like I say, we tried to minimize any place where we'd have a flat two-story face facing downhill to the street. So you want to flip to one of the sides, Andrew? Or whatever the next picture is? Okay, this shows the side elevations. Now, the dotted line up above, that's the allowable height for our property. So what we've tried to do right out of the gate was to try to minimize the massing of the building, not only from the street, but from this as well. So we really tucked the house into the ascending slope so that the uphill side of the first level is is completely buried. The main level of the house on the back side matches grade. And then the ADU actually steps up with the topography. And even with that, the back side of the ADU has a retaining wall. So the back side of the ADU is buried, like varies from about three feet to five feet on the back side of that building. So it's very, very much nestled down into the property. In fact, the neighbors that are concerned about the visual impact of our property, this is what they'd see from their side, their floor level is way above our roof line. So any chance of this building having a visual impact in terms of their privacy from their adjacent property just isn't going to happen. So once again, the dotted lineup above is our allowable height. So we could have conceivably submitted an application with much more building further up the hill with a much more massive structure, but that wasn't our intention. We wanted something that fit nicely into the property. We're well below our allowable height, well below our allowable square footage. We're not on any setback, front side or rear. We're well below our allowable lot coverage. So we wanted something that was really comfortably sitting into the topography of the property. We're not doing much grading around the perimeter of the building. So like, for example, uphill part of the property, the only grading we're going to do is to control the downhill slope in terms of drainage. That was a question that came up in terms of your French drains. We're going to put French drains around the entire perimeter of the building down below at the foundation level. Additionally, we'll have surface drainage that we collect water on the high side of the property and then move it around to the side of the property. So that's part of our just our normal construction technique. Now, if you were to flip to that next sheet, Andrew. And so we, the objective was to create a courtyard-style house. Because that's one of the really nice qualities of this style of architecture, is the intimacy of these exterior spaces and how the indoor living connects to those outdoor spaces. So we wanted basically a C-shaped building. And because sunlight is such a paramount up there on this hillside, we wanted the open face of the sea facing towards the southern sun. So that's why it's oriented in this direction, basically. So we catch as much southern light as we can going into the courtyard. The main space over the top of the garage is the the kitchen dining family room. It has glass on three sides and has a big window in the kitchen looking due east up to the hillside. And that's why we pulled the ADU back so that view from the kitchen window is uninterrupted, looking up into the trees. And we get lots of nice morning light into that kitchen space. And then the ADU is tucked up in the side, once again, into the hillside. And we have the, it has a nice center line of the ADU through the cupboard porch. It comes up and hits right through the center line of our front door. So what happens is when you come in, you see this nice center line. There's a fountain in the courtyard. It's the center line of the steps, the center line of the doors into the ADU. So it creates this really nice dramatic entrance with the placement of the ADUs relates to the entry approach. But like I say, primarily what it does, it allows the main living space to have maximum daylight on three side. I say, up on the hillside, natural light is really a, in short order. So primarily, like I say, it's it's not a big house for the site in terms of height or square footage. We we we're minimizing virtually all of the uphill grading. There's plenty of space around the building to create vegetation and screening. And that was something that was paramount for us in terms of what you see from the street and also how the building is screened from the neighbors. And Joni Janeky, our landscape architect, will will talk to the landscaping concept.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Oh, Tom, actually, Joni, I'm going to just address something in a moment.
Great.
We did want to talk about one of the perhaps more contentious issues around our project, and and some of the commissioners have already touched upon it, which are the the proposed removal of the heritage redwood that's on onsite of the project. We wanted to express at least our view of of why that is necessary. And it's really because, it's not because we don't like redwoods. We have multiple redwoods planted on our own property that we try to maintain carefully. They're beautiful trees, and they are pretty fire-resistant when maintained properly. But the problem is they're also very invasive. And this particular tree sits eleven feet south of the property line inside the residential setback. And it sits, as Martha mentioned, more or less in the center of the property on on the east-west axis. And the problem with that is with the extensive root system, the the large girth of the tree itself, which the trunk, which actually sits in the buildable lot, as well as the twelve-foot expanse from the edge of that trunk. So it's really fourteen feet from the center of the tree. That really interferes with a large portion of the project site that is available to us. This lot has already been historically truncated compared to most of its peers. The lot to the north, the four oh seven Chapman Lot, bought a piece of it in the forties. Also, the lot to the east, the four oh one Chapman Lot, bought a piece of the eastern edge. And between those two things, we have less space in the middle to work with. But we were keen to build a property that didn't put ADUs in far-flung corners right up next to our our neighbors where there'd be privacy issues, both for them and for the occupants of the ADU. We wanted to build at a low profile in the center of the lot and have a tasteful design that fit into the landscape. But the problem is the tree's right there. As you've noted already, the arborist recommended the town remove actually all redwoods from the site, which we were a bit surprised by, but that was the recommendation and also noted the fire, the RIN Fire Department. To Commissioner Bundy's point, maintenance of the tree would be absolutely necessary to reduce the fire risk such that we, the the words quote-unquote were to limit up aggressively, to remove limbs from the bottom third, to thin out the remaining branches by about fifty percent, forty, fifty percent, somewhere in that range, and then to obviously truncate the remaining branches so as to avoid failure, which means it would be probably a more aesthetically beautiful tree, but not offer the screening and privacy benefits that it does currently today. In in fact, the mass of the tree would be dramatically reduced. So even its retention wouldn't mean the same benefit that it might offer today. They also noted that the bamboo that has been planted at the base of the tree actually does create an enhanced fire risk because it could catch on fire and create a furnace effect that would light up the bottom of the tree from the bottom and keep building up heat. Trapped under the branches. So there's a lot of dangerous conditions right around the tree. So we we do, we are asking for its removal because we think it imposes costly burdens on us that are, that make building on our site unworkable. As you may have seen from our comment letter, this is the real impact from the tree on the site. We can't, we, I drawn a twelve-foot, excuse me, a fourteen-foot radius circle around the center of the tree or twelve feet from the edge of the trunk, per the arborist's report. And you can see the direct conflict that it presents with a large portion of the buildable zone. So we do understand that this will cause a loss of privacy potentially for our neighbors to the north, the Hubertys. And they've commented in in that vein. So we took a second look at our landscaping plan to expressly address this issue. And I'm going to have Joni Janeky talk about it in a moment. But really, we tried to plant it with numerous trees, including two oversized oaks larger than the requirement replacing a heritage tree, as well as a shrub underneath that are designed to work with the trees we've chosen and sit under them to prevent screening at the midsection, as well as the canopy of the tree at the top would provide for a fairly complete screening along the border, as well as some canopy and shade. We like these trees because they're consistent with the arborist's report, but they're also fire, drought, and deer resistant, and and almost all of them are native. And the ones that are not are native adjacent. So Joni, I'm going to turn it over to you to talk about the specifics of this scheme that you helped us design.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to be able to be here, even though it's through Zoom. I'm going to focus in on the edge, mostly the edge. But before I go there, I just wanted to mention that and reiterate that the goal of the landscape is to really knit in and fit with the overall plant community that's in the area and and both, well, primarily the native plant community. So it's woodland forest. And in fact, it's kind of tending to be maybe a little bit drier as we move to the future. And I think that that's what's really concerning the fire departments. And with the recent fires, including our fires here in Bonny Doon, it's been really apparent that the long-term stress that a lot of the redwoods have had has left them in a position where they're more prone to having more of a fuel load. So we have redwoods outside here that are still potentially smoldering, and we get hot spots almost daily. So it's unfortunate, but it seems like there's a tendency for less less rain. Here, along the northern edge, in thinking about if the redwood isn't there, how do we go about it? As Andrew said, you know, our approach was to do a combination of planting, going with a coastlive oak, the Quercus aggrifoli. a coast live oak, the Quercis agrifolia, combining both a standard and a multi-trunk tree so that we get both height at the northeast corner and width at the kind of the junction between the main house and the ADU and the neighboring property to the north. Along and in between, all the way down the hillside, we have the Arbutus marina, which many of you probably know as a strawberry tree. This tree is evergreen, has beautiful bark, although it's not a specific native. It was a cultivar made to behave like a native, like a Manzanita or Madrona, yet very hardy. And ultimately gets to have a nice dense canopy, but more importantly, very interesting form and big leathery leaves. And lower down in the lower canopy, as you go along the edge, we've selected a mix of native plants that the city both recommended and that I think that Andrew and Michelle both are clients very much like and provide habitat and even nectar and seed and feed for wildlife is the Toyon, the Howard McMinn Manzanita, and the Coffeyberry, all of which are lower fuel levels. So combined, we're really getting a nice layering of planting along that edge that's evergreen and will provide a nice screen between the two properties.
Thank you, Joni. One last thing, the commissioners may come back and ask about this expressly, but it's hard to see here, but there's been a lot of question about water flow. We have created a drainage system for the entire property, but a lot of the drainage system feeds into the central courtyard and it's difficult to make out the outline. But underneath
I'm breaking up.
is a large-scale aquifer tank that we've installed so that we can percolate water through the site, capture rainwater, and reuse it. So we're investing on that for for environmental benefit and so that we use less water on the project site. I'm getting a notice that my sound is coming in and out. So did everyone hear that okay? That there's a tank right here underneath the trellis, a water tank?
Yeah, we did hear you, Andrew, and thank you. I was going to address that. So that's great. All of the runoff, I think Tom addressed it as well. We definitely want to manage it. We know it can be a wet site when it rains.
It mostly flows into the courtyard and then, and the courtyard then feeds this. It will pump water to the top of the property and and just use gravity to feed the bottom of the property. I forget the size of it right now. I think it's over 800 gallons.
Yeah.
Or I can't recall.
It's 850.
850, yeah. So I just wanted to conclude by saying that we are committed to the neighborhood. We really have tried numerous, we're here, we're in it for the long term. We've been here 15 years. We've planned on being here for the rest of our lives. We've even talked about this property one day belonged to our daughters. We've made numerous outreach efforts at outreach and compromise with our neighbors. We intend to do a lot more of that going forward. In particular, I think you've received a late-breaking comment from one of our neighbors uphill of this particular project site regarding some problematic sewage, ancient and problematic sewage conditions that are really not according to code. We think we've created an initial agreement about how to resolve those problems that wouldn't impact our neighbors. I don't want to speak for them. They may speak for themselves in a moment, but we have come to at least a tentative agreement to resolve those problems. And I think we're excited about solving a longstanding sewage issue. We are also, as Commissioner, I think Bundy noted, we're intending to invest in the improvement of an adjacent public easement pathway for egress, safety, beauty, and landscaping for the benefit of the neighborhood. It is contingent on us getting several permits, but we hope to to move forward to do that. We've also been very cognizant of some of the ancient conditions that might affect the Huberties, our neighbors to the north at 407 Chapman, particularly a non-compliant PGE power line services their house directly through the middle of 407 Chapman. Sorry, we see 403 Chapman, our project site. And we've offered to, offered PGE a free easement at no charge to anyone to run the power lines for the eastern edge of our property via an underground buried conduit. And we've offered to help with the cost of construction of that conduit so that the Huberties could get their power in that fashion. We've also, as we mentioned, redesigned our landscape border to promote privacy and screening with the potential removal of the redwood tree. We have offered to design that border in conjunction with the Huberties. So far, they've declined to do so, but they have left open the possibility that they might work with us at some point on doing so. And lastly, we, you may have read a shed that has been cited in, we believe in a non-compliant space on on the Hubertie lot, the 407 Chapman lot, but also which actually traverses the property line and actually sits on our property as well. We've tried to work with the Huberties about some long-term resolutions for that shed. Unfortunately, we have not. The offers we've made have been declined so far, but we shall see, but we're trying to work with them on this basis. So we're, we are committed to the neighborhood. We're trying to find solutions to problems and we're excited to move forward. And that's our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation and information. It's enlightening. I will now ask the commissioners if they have any questions for yourselves or any of the design team. So I will start with Margaret. If she has any questions for the design team at this point, can you say if you do or do not, Margaret?
I don't now. Something may come up, but right now I'm just kind of digesting it.
Okay. Thank you. Bob, do you have any questions for the design team or the applicant?
Yes. My understanding is that the initial design that you put forth, which is really a very nice design, included keeping the redwood tree until you discovered the exact location of it in relationship to your plans. And so I wanted to know if at that point you looked at any way to redesign the project knowing that the ADU could move outside of the normal building envelope because it is an ADU and and can get moved. Was there any thought to looking at redesigning it so that the redwood tree could be accommodated?
Yeah, we did consider various options. The reason this happened is we were not really aware of the girth of the tree and its, the root, the expanse of the root system. We had an accurate survey done, but the tree was initially misdrawn on the location of the survey. There were correct data existed, but the, the, the survey located the tree closer to the property boundary than was actually the case. That was the one, it was not an official survey. It was a topographical map that was, that tree unfortunately was in error. It was also induced further by the fact that our neighbors had engaged in various encroachments so as to present the property line as their property line is extending closer to the tree. So there was a comedy of errors. We had visual representations of the property line that made the tree look like it was near the border, but also the surveyor misdrew it. So two errors happened there. One induced by our neighbors and one by the surveyor. And so when we realized that, we started looking at various designs and the problem that we kept confounding with, if I can take us back and, can you still see my presentation? I'd like to present, you know, is, present some of the difficulties we engage with in this particular lot. As Martha noted, it sloped from, not only from west to east or up, running upward on this diagram, but also to a lesser extent from south to north. So we have this dual sloping feature, and it really meant that if we were going to tuck the house into the hillside, we had very few angles to work with. We were also very determined to, you know, we had, when we hired Tom Eeny, the first consideration was a Spanish colonial design. The second was a courtyard, a private enclosed courtyard where we could channel the energy of the house into the center. So that we could be together and not disturb our neighbors and have that enclosed feeling. So that was a really important design consideration. So given that we wanted to keep the ADU close to create that courtyard, that's why we set it inside the residential setbacks, also for privacy for our neighbors. You wind up with this G-shaped diagram here. So what we started looking at was, well, okay, the tree's there. What if we were to, what the commission could ask us to do is rotate the residence away from the tree. And if I imagine this, the interior of this lot is a square clock face, the current house runs between 3:00 and 9:00, and at 9:00 it conflicts with the tree. The ADU runs from about midnight or so to 9:00 also conflicting with the tree. The problem is if we rotate the and stay within the confines, it'll push the house up to, oh, I don't know, 1:00 or 2:00, which does also start to weigh on some of our design objectives about having openness and light in that side of the house. But let's just say we did it. The problem is it forces the ADU to move down into an even greater conflict with the tree itself. It really moves it from midnight to 9:00 to maybe 11:00 to 8:00. And it puts it in direct impact with the tree. We're really not keen on building the ADU somewhere else on the site, not only for the difficulty of doing so with the slope, but because we lose our courtyard. And that's what this project's really been about. It was the second consideration besides the design, the style of the house itself.
And we want ADU, two steps above that, that, you know, parents or something are visiting and sitting on the porch, they feel like they're part of the courtyard. If the ADU were to push up the lot, it might push the building, the floor level up five or six feet. And then at that point, it's not really part of the main house. It's just, it's a distant building at that point. And then the building gets much taller and then it has a greater visual impact on the neighbors who are concerned about visual impact. So it's, we tried to keep the ADU down low and tucked into the hillside for a lot of different reasons. It engages the courtyard and it gives a much lower profile to the, to the neighbors to the north.
So the other question in regard to that is, is I look at it, it looks like the main entrance for the ADU is off that public easement as opposed to the courtyard arch that goes to a pathway around the property. Is that correct?
I wouldn't call it, I wouldn't call it the main entrance. That's, that's an access point. Also, we're considering having an access point coming from the property on the other side of the walkway so that the, that the fosters can come across the access point and come over to this other property as well with, with opposite gate. So having the houses linked together has been an important consideration from a site design from, from day one, basically.
Because they can come through that side gate right there. Andrew, your cursor to the left.
Yeah.
Right.
There's the side gate. We might build a new gate in our property which sits right here to connect. It is a consideration that at some point, if this were to become an income unit, at some point, you know, it could provide an alternate entrance. But this is Commissioner Bundy, our main proposal, you know, is that, you know, we expect to have elderly parents living in this house. And to the extent they're moving around in it, they would probably enter through the garage actually and ride up in an elevator, which is located right here, and then cross the courtyard if need be to that, to that house or, or reside, most likely it would be a caregiver that would reside there potentially, and they might reside in the master bedroom there.
And I would just add that they could also go along the side yard walk, right, where the gate is from the, from the driveway. You can walk internal up. You don't have to be in the public area.
Right, right here, Joni?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. The, the other final thought that I had on this is that while these homes are in disrepair, there is some historic significance to them and that according to the John O'Hale and the History of Corder Medera, these units were in the Panama exposition of 1915 as modern houses. And as I walked the property and looked at them, they are in disrepair, but there is a lot of valuable resource material that's still in there. And we like green building and we like green deconstruction. So is there a plan to recycle as much of the, say, windows, exterior redwood siding, doors as possible on the demolition of these buildings?
We don't have a plan to necessarily reuse the materials which are, in our view, rotted and not useful for future habitation and would not allow us to build the, the residence to, according to current standards and codes. Also, the design that we've chosen for our house, stucco, wouldn't be framed with redwood or, or those sort of materials. We have tried to tour the site to see if there are any objects of historic value. We would definitely welcome any town historian that would wish to peruse the site, maybe salvage some of the materials for whatever use the town might wish for to promote the history of the site. As far as we understand it, the main historical value of these, these homes was because built for mobile construction. And they're very lightly and very fragile so that they could be pushed around, and they were never meant for long-term habitation. So the materials that were used were rather slipshod. One of the structures, the smaller structure, has almost no internal framing. You can actually push the house physically with your own hands on one side, and the wall on the other will shake because the roof pulls it across. Neither house is on a proper foundation. They're on cinder block. So we would, we would suggest that the materials available are really not of the caliber or quality that would be required to build a new construction. But there may be some items of historic value. We, we, these were our best four shots on camera now. There's a small stained glass window that's broken with some duct tape, some two doorknobs.
We could reuse that.
Sorry?
We could reuse that.
Yeah, we could.
Potentially. We had thought maybe we could use it in a gate as there's some bricks from the old Liver
You're cutting out.
But they are there.
Yeah, we could use those.
So there may be some possibility, some possibility of the brick. We would also very much welcome if town wants to commission a, I know I'm breaking up, but I, we would very much welcome if the town wants to commission a plaque. We'd happy, happily install a plaque, you know, either in our driveway or in the public pathway that could commemorate these structures and the historic value they might have to the town, you know, so that maybe someone walking by and was looking for these houses could actually find where they once stood.
And we could document them in terms of a lot of photographs and maybe generate some floor plans of what the buildings are as well for the historians.
So I'm going to speak for you, Bob, a little bit here, but I, I think your question was about deconstruction as well.
Right.
Many communities actually require that the materials be salvaged in some way. And Corder Medera doesn't have that yet. So it simply means that it gets sorted and responsibly taken to a recycler, whether it's going to be ground into wood pulp or that the concrete, the cinder blocks go to the correct, you know, responsible receptacle, et cetera, et cetera. And that's the way it goes. And I think that's what Dr. Bundy was asking about.
Let me clarify a little bit. I was thinking more in relationship to these going to Urbanore or Omega Salvage in Berkeley, you know, where they have these types of doors, windows. And these are not things that are used in new construction, as you point out. These are things that people would use in a cabin or workshop or something where they're really trying to create a, you know, 1920s look or something like that. And the, the main building has redwood on it that really is Bordenbatten, you know, actually the, I think, 12-inch redwood. So this was, this was just a recommendation or suggestion on my part to be good stewards and, and not put too much in the landfill.
We can certainly look at that. We're trying to have as low an impact on the project site as possible from a natural perspective. We're trying to re-percolate water in that storage unit. We're trying to, we're obviously going to put solar throughout this. We're going to try and design it without even any gas, natural gas, and make it all electric. We may ask for the leads just in case. One of our neighbors, Peter Schwartz, who has been involved with the town's planning department in the past, has been enormously helpful in counseling me. And I'm going to be asking many more questions before all is said and done, act on this site, might maybe go for an all-electric home. So I, we're not averse to trying to think very carefully about how to recycle these materials. I just don't know that we can recycle them in our project.
Right. One of the, just lastly, one of the things early on, when we, one of the first walks we had on the property, we talked about, you know, whether or not we could find some, like the pavers, some really kind of meaningful pieces that maybe aren't going to go somewhere else to a museum or to a salvage place and reuse them in the landscape particularly to have a kind of a story about the past.
Okay. Bob, do you have any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rizzo?
Yes. I had a few questions, I think.
I think circling back to, to Commissioner Vandell's question, it's hard to tell how high the ridge line is at the garage. I think it's the highest point. It looks like you're well under, but I'm just curious to know what that height is. Yeah, it just kind of goes to your eve. It doesn't go to the ridge.
Well, you can take that 25-foot line and extrapolate it out to the right there a little bit.
Yeah, I'm having trouble with my mouse.
There it is. There it is.
Oh, you're 25 feet. I just wanted you to address that. And I think this, this comment, questions for Joni, maybe. I'm curious, I'm in the building industry as well, and I've had to deal with redwood roots and building foundations. How far does a redwood's root grow per year? So if it was to be even, if they were able to retain this tree, would it be invasive in the future? Are they putting the property in jeopardy in 10 years to where there'd be a foundation failure?
Well, you know, it's a good question. One of the things we are doing with the runoff is we're routing it around the edges. And so there will be some piping that comes along there. And you know how roots can be. They're looking for moisture. They're seeking water. So I would expect that there would be growth towards them. And then it's also can be kind of a wet area on that north side of the building. So I think we will get a good amount of root growth. How fast, couldn't really tell you. But I do know that on other projects where we have redwoods, we are now coming back 10 years, 15 years later and having to continually root prune them and in some cases, remove them and kind of take them out of all the infrastructure and the foundation that they've worked their way into. So to your point, they do, they do seek moisture wherever they can.
Yeah, I did tear down a house a few years ago. This is maybe 30 feet from a redwood tree, and the foundation was buckling from the root system. And the house had to come down because the foundation was compromised. So it's amazing how aggressive the roots are in these trees.
The other thing I would say is when or if we do take it out, there's going to be a lot of underground kind of roots and reconditioning of the soil. You know, because it's pretty extensive there.
Okay. And lastly, I know when I walked the site, there were two sheds on the property line. I didn't know which one you guys were talking about, and hopefully we don't have to talk about it again. But if it comes up, which shed were you talking about that was in discussion in all of the letters? There's one on the lower end of the property that's sort of maybe in the front of 407's house. And then there was one sort of in the back that, you know, I didn't go over there. So it's over in the back?
Yes, Commissioner Rizzo, it's in the back of the property. Situated, if you can see my cursor, roughly where this other oak tree is. Not where the oak tree is, but nearby here. It does cross the property line by somewhere between six inches and a foot. I precisely measured it. It's only one corner of it, but most of it sits right on the, on the property line. Right.
Is, is that palm you're relocating somewhere else? Because I don't see it on the plan. I'm just curious. The big palm.
The shed hasn't been drawn on the plan, no. Oh, the palm.
The big guy in the back.
That, we need to add that.
I think there was a slight... Yeah, we're actually going to try and relocate it to our property at H. Stetson.
Oh, okay. I'm just, it's great that you're reusing it, so very interesting tree.
It's gorgeous. Yeah, it's really wonderful.
Yeah, we're trying to relocate it to our property at Stetson. I, I would, it is contingent on feasibility, but that's the goal. The, the neighbors, I don't want to speak for them. They may or may not be on this call, but the neighbors to 401, excuse me, to the east of 401 Chapman have commented, not harshly, but somewhat negatively about the impediment that the palm creates to their views. It sits right about here. It's a rather monstrous plant. It also hasn't been maintained and could look more attractive than it does at present. Very healthy canary palm. Is that right, Joni?
It's a date palm.
Date palm, sorry, date palm. Very healthy one, it seems, other than its maintenance. So we're going to try and relocate it to our backyard.
Okay. And then lastly, on the whole privacy, on the northern landscaping, we talk a lot about the trees, but, you know, and looking at the story poles, I agree that it's going to be sitting very low compared to the house next door to the north. What, what are the shrubs? What's going to be the landscape on the lower level? Because I think it's under the canopy, which is going to be almost more important to the privacy and more impact than the actual trees, because that's where the windows are.
Sure, I can address that. Yeah, so underneath the northern edge are the, are the coffee berry. Well, starting from the northeast corner, we have toyon, which get, you know, eight to 15 feet tall and wide. And then we have our oak. And then we move into coffee berry, which get seven, eight feet of ultimately kind of round, dense, green. Those go along the edge. We have smaller story, understory, kind of hookah or coral bells and flowering plants along the border there. But, but from a more meaningful point of view would be the coffee berry and then transitioning as we go further down the hill to Manzanita and the Howard McMinn, which get about the same height.
We also, did you mention the strawberry trees, Joni?
Oh, well, those are, yeah. So we are, what, we're layering it. And because we're using the lower fuel plants, we're comfortable that we're not creating a ladder. So we have the coffee berry. And then between them are the multi-trunk Arbutus marina, which are, you know, evergreen tree. So you'll have some gap in the canopy, but not, you know, you can control it. So you're going to let the shrubs grow fairly close and then have the wider canopy of the multi-trunk Arbutus marina. So you get display. That's what we wanted. We wanted to get some height and splay and layering.
So the layering underneath is, are those shrubs? Are they going to come up three, four feet or, you know?
Yeah, they'll probably get five, six feet.
Yeah. It'll pass the lower level windows with the other lower level windows of the neighboring house.
Yeah, so if they're looking down on their, on the Foster's house, they'll be blocking. They'll be helping screen that. And they're, again, they're like 36 feet away. So.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any questions.
All right, thank you, Jim. Phillips, are you in the background there?
Yes.
Have some questions?
Since Bob defended the redwood tree, I guess I'm going to prosecute it.
Well, I want to know if you have any questions for the applicant here.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
Okay.
And everybody else has been discussing the tree, so I shall too. I think the tree is dangerous and I am adamantly opposed to retaining it. And I'm saying this from personal experience, and I want to hear a response from the landscape architect. When I built my home in Kentfield, there was a very large oak tree with the white circumference that the homeowners association, since Kentfield is within county and not a city, homeowners associations have a lot more say than you see in a town, insisted it could not be removed. And we even moved the house over a little bit. An arborist looked at it. Everything that has been talked about here, we did. And the house was built. And this was at a time when we used to have pretty wet winters. And during the wet winter and the storm, the first year we were there, the tree fell over because the root network, which it's, which was very widespread, fell into the house and knocked through the chimney, knocked through the exterior wall. And luckily, it happened in the daytime because it fell on my daughter's bed. And if it had been nighttime, she would have been in the bed and killed. So, I mean, everybody's talking about protecting the tree and taking care of the tree. And I'm more concerned about protecting the house that's being built and the people in it. And I think sometimes we just have to say, the tree has got to go. Things are being done, you know, to make up for the privacy that's being lost. And I think the landscape plan, from what I've been able to see and listen to tonight, is more than adequate and far more attractive than the tree itself. As far as the house goes, I think it's very attractive. I like the way the ADU works into it. I like the courtyard. I like the materials. But as I say, I'm adamant about the fact that that tree should not be retained because we may not have big storms now, but just this, I guess, last month, we had the big windstorm where trees were practically laying down nowhere and stuff like that. And other than that, as I say, the French drain was mentioned, so I'm not concerned about the drainage. And all the other things seem to be being worked out with PG&E, et cetera.
Do you have any questions for the landscape architect regarding the tree at this point?
Yes, I want the, my, the reason I brought it up is I want to hear the landscape architect's comments on what I said about the tree and the danger it could form.
Oh, okay. I can, I can address that in some ways. I'm sorry that that happened. And that is definitely possible when we're building around any tree. And then when we also alter the structure of its, its setting and even its own structure by imagine limbing up that redwood, you know, 24 or so, I don't know how many feet, but a good amount will be limbed up for fire safety. And then pruning it in. I mean, it's going through a lot of impact in order to get it to comply with how we want it to be should there be fire and how we want it to be so that there aren't huge, we call them widow makers, those big, long limbs, overextended limbs that come falling down from the upper canopy of the tree down to the ground level. So, you know, there, there's inherent in any tree a risk. But when you start to poke and prod it and modify it, there's even more. And so you're, you always have the potential of destabilizing it even further than it may be now. Then add on to that, that we'll be digging footings and doing construction and we'll do all the care you, you would do to do best management practices to protect it. But as you saw, there's still the chance for, for it to fail. And it is a lot of weight and it can be deadly. And so when an arborist says, you know, a tree is, is in a particular state, we're very respectful of that. I mean, we, we don't want to have problems, obviously. So I don't know if I answered your question exactly. It's not an exact science. So it's, it's... But we do know a lot about it. And we do know that when we start to disturb its habitat, its setting, that, that can have impacts in its structural integrity. So.
Well, I mean, especially because of the root system, the width of it is going to be partially under the foundation. And I think that makes it more dangerous than just pruning it back. The fact that the root system, and if I remember correctly, redwoods have a fairly shallow root system. Is that correct?
That's correct. They have a lot of surface roots and then they have large structural roots.
Yeah, yeah. And see, that is really a major concern of mine. As I say, I know from experience how dangerous it could be be when the root structure of the tree is disturbed.
Phillips, any other questions you have for the applicant or their staff?
No, I think between Martha's presentation, which was excellent, and what we've learned from the applicants and their architect and landscape architect, we have a fairly good picture of what is being done, why it's being done. And it looks good. It looks like it will fit in the neighborhood.
We'll come back to...
It's not asking for any variances, you know.
We'll come back to commentary, I think, shortly after public comment. But I do have a couple of questions relative to the redwood tree myself. In other communities, we're being asked as builders to create a tree protection zone of over 45 feet from the center of a redwood trunk. Have you had any experience with that same thing? I'm asking this of Joni or Tom.
Forty-five feet? Haven't run across that yet. We do a lot of work in the redwood forest. We do a lot of campus work at UCSC, at the University of California, Santa Cruz. And they are very cautious about the critical root zone. And we've been very successful in getting closer to the trees. And 25 years later, a lot of them have done well. But now, I'm going to tell you, that we're finding they're starting to decline primarily because of the lack of moisture.
Yeah, okay. So you haven't heard about, this is a bona fide fact, that 45 feet is a tree protection zone in some communities for redwood.
No, it's typically one inch for one foot, or, yeah, one foot of diameter, or one inch of caliper, you go one foot out. So, you know, you, there's a rule of thumb. But I haven't heard of a standard like that.
They have done it by tree height. So if it's a 70-foot redwood tree, then there's a formula they have, anyway.
I'm not familiar with it.
So you guys have calculated with a tank that you're going to store water for a period of time. We're really glad to see that you're doing that. And you're using a low water system. How, how many gallons per day roughly do you think you're going to use on a dry day for water in this landscape? Have you done a water study yet?
Well, we did do, oh, go ahead, Andrew.
Sure, Chase, I'm afraid I don't have that statistic. I, I did a very crude flow rate assumption. And if the tank was entirely full from winter storms, which it should fill, I calculated that it would get us about two-thirds of the way through the year. I'm sorry, I don't have the, the weekly, somewhere in my calculation was the weekly rate. I don't have that. I'd have to go look it up. But the tank alone should water about 100% of, 100% of the plantings on the property for about two-thirds of the year. We have not, that was a crude estimate. And also, I have to admit, the northern boundary, that was based on the original landscape plan, and the northern boundary has more trees on it now. So I may be, I may have to hedge that number to something lower. That would be something we're going to refine as we move forward. But it was about two-thirds of the watering season. Then we'd rely on town water.
In the slides that you have, since we're still looking at your screen, you have a elevation of the house from the north side, I believe, that shows the elevation of the eve rate, you know, must be the southern, southern one.
The southern side, maybe this one?
Yeah. Right, I guess that's the one. I was seeing, there's another one that had a grade to top of roof elevation, but I can't read the number on the front there that you have.
The grade, I'm sorry, my, my mouse will not drive to the left. Maybe it's still going to do it. At the far left of this diagram, it says 21 feet to the edge of the roof eve. And then to the top of the roof, it's 25 feet to the grade. And the chimney, if I recall correctly, is 30 feet, which does max out in that one location of the chimney. Beyond that, it's well below the allowed elevation. I'm sorry, I think you had more questions, though.
No, well, the point was to answer Commissioner Vandell's question about what it looks like from the street. But the fact that, at that point, the body of the house is well below the 30-foot elevation would imply that even from the street, you might look at 30 feet all the way to the street, something like that.
I think that's roughly correct. I could do a little research on the side while we're talking and look. But I think there's a roughly five to six-foot drop between the grade that's at the garage level. Tom, I don't know if you know offhand.
It's about right.
Street level. So it might, you know, if the roof is there for 25 feet at peak, it might give the impression of a 30-foot structure. It will be behind, what we haven't drawn here is that there will be walls in front of at least the non- of at least the, the non-driveway part. There'll be that three-foot wall Martha described.
Oh, you're breaking up, Andrew.
So there'll be some buffering with plantings in front. I'm sorry, maybe Joni, you can handle, there's going to be a three-foot
So I can talk about it.
...wall in front that will enclose.
Right. What we wanted to do is make sure that we kind of terrace the, or scale down the house. And so we have a front entry court, and then a low 30-inch-high wall that surrounds it. And then you step down to the street, and then we have a planted border between the street and the stucco wall with the tile, the brick tile top that surrounds that courtyard. So we really wanted to kind of step, step, step up. The difference is, Joanne in my office was just telling me, the difference between the street level and the garage is about three, four feet. And then we have a bit more when you go to the front door. But then what we've done is to step it up so that we break up the flatness, potential flatness that you might see of the facade as you drive or walk by.
Okay. And that front setback from the street to the garage is about how far exactly?
That front setback.
Twenty feet.
Martha has it on her diagram.
She does.
Right. Okay, so the setback itself is listed at 20 feet. So it's 20 feet back from a property line, which is probably the street. I don't know that.
No, the property line is, is right down there. It's, yeah, you're showing it. Andrew's got his cursor on it right now, where the, there's a dimension number on the survey, right in the driveway center.
Right. So the, there is sort of then a, the street is further away.
Probably eight to 10 feet.
Yeah, so it's almost, it's at least 25 feet then from the street to the house, yeah.
Oh, yeah, right.
Okay. All right. Just trying to clarify that.
Yeah, the garage in the house are pushed back.
Okay. That's helpful. Margaret, did you have any questions that have come up since I asked you if you had any questions?
I did, and it might not be totally within our purview. But just out of curiosity, because of the conversation, what is the purpose of the ADU?
We intended for a caregiver to the parent, potentially, potentially.
So it was never meant to be like an additional rental unit? It was going to be as part of your sort of enclave of family?
Well, yes. I mean, it would, it could be used as such at some point in the, in the property's future. And it, it might be part of the caregiver's compensation to rent it.
It has a lot of flexibility of use. Basically, it has your needs change over the next 20, 30 years. That ADU can serve a lot of different functions, basically.
Okay. And, and just one more thing, because it just came up a minute ago here. That's your property line, this dotted line in front, is that right?
Ye- yes. If you're talking about in front as at the bottom of the diagram, that's it there, yes.
And so you're planting in front of your property line, is that right?
That's correct.
There's an intention to do some plantings to improve the, both the soil retention so that it doesn't slough into the street, but also for the beauty of it. But yes, it's in the, in the public right-of-way, which is pretty common, I think, for most homes.
Okay, and...
To do plantings in that area. I, I don't know, the commissioner would know better, but I think it's a standard, a standard thing.
And so in front of that, there's a sidewalk, is that correct?
No, there's no sidewalk.
There's no sidewalks. The planting is going to meet the street where cars are?
The, the back of curb.
Mm-hmm. So, so someone would have to walk in the street to get around that area?
That is presently the case, and our, our design doesn't modify that condition.
Okay.
They're not, they're not occupying something different than what's already occupied by the property.
I get it.
Yeah, okay. All right. So with that said, we've had a good, long presentation, and I believe it's time for us to get to public comment on this project. I have a timer in front of me that has three minutes set on it, and it has chimes on it, which should echo through my microphone should we reach the three-minute time limit for any public commenter. So with that said, Tracy, we'll open it up to public comment. And let's see who we've got and how many people we have, and we'll go at it.
This is Tracy speaking. I just wanted to also mention, if anyone doesn't want to speak and would like to provide a written comment, or has audio problems and would like to provide a written comment, I can read that into the record up to three minutes' point. And you would email that to publiccomment@tcmmail.org. And one other announcement is that, I know we have a, at least one neighbor on the call. If you would like to have your video shown, please let me know when I unmute you, and I can promote you to a panelist so that the commission can see you. I have Brent here. Brent, I'm going to lower your hand and allow you to talk.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Brent Harrison. I was just curious, I know that the ADU is a potential future project, but a, as kind of shown on the north elevation, it does look like it's a continuous roofline of the two buildings. Are, is it anticipated that this project would be graded all at once? And if so, has that kind of already been contemplated and calculated? Because it, you know, it seems like it would be much more substantial to, to for, to go ahead and do that for the ADU now than just the house.
They'll answer the question, or we'll address questions at the end of the public comment section. So we won't enter into a dialogue at the moment. So Brent, do you have any other questions or any other statements you'd like to make?
No, I, I realize that the, you know, there's, there's constraints with the setbacks. I just also would wonder if the applicant looked at doing a remodel of the house to work within the setbacks that are currently there versus the, the proposed? As, you know, the driveway, we have noted, is, is pretty close to the corner of the, of the intersection of Stetson and Chapman, which is sometimes a little bit of a blind corner. So I was wondering if they've looked at it as well, if they could address that at the end. That would be great.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. I just wanted to repeat that if you'd like your video on, please let me know. I have Sue. Sue, I'm going to lower your hand and allow you to talk.
Hello. My name is Susan Huberty, and my husband and I have lived at 407 Chapman Drive since 1980. We were married in the house and raised our two kids there. And we've worked on the house for 40 years to make it our retirement home. And so we do have a pretty intense relationship with the property for obvious reasons. First, maybe before my timer, I wanted to answer a couple of questions. There was a question about what rooms were facing the property. It is all of our bedrooms. And I think we have a real ongoing concern about noise in the properties for perhaps people who are late night, as opposed to ourselves. We don't really stay up all that late. That's certainly a big concern for us with having houses so close. And we do open our windows at night because we're not air-conditioned. And then we also, our dining room also faces that room. And we spend a lot of time, I spend a lot of time in the kitchen and dining room, and we are facing the property. So that was to answer that question. And then the comments about the shed and the various other encroachments and the power line, et cetera, could probably fill a, you know, fairly extensive article. Obviously, I won't go into it, but there's a lot of historical reasons for that. So because I have three remarks, I'm going to have to, I have comments that take about four minutes, so I will try to rush through them. I think my first remark is to acknowledge the ongoing conversations with the Fosters regarding various civil matters involving our property, specifically the PG&E easement for our power lines and utility lines and the location of our tool shed. And we do sincerely thank them for considering our needs in these important and fundamental matters. Next, we'd like to address the impact of this construction project on us. The project will be a major part of our life for at least 12 to 18 months. I'm going to have to jump kind of to the end of my comments. I was going to go on and on about this. But we recently decided to request a six-to-eight-foot wooden privacy fence be constructed on the lot line as soon as possible after the property is cleared and adequate and graded to be maintained by both users. We know the Fosters have a wonderful landscape plan, but it's unlikely that it can provide any protection during construction. And then afterwards, the fence could provide privacy from buildings which are only 10-foot from our property, and a footpath, which nobody has talked about yet. There's a footpath that is going to be right next to our house. Regarding the, moving on, regarding the construction management plan, we request that the work hours begin at 8:00 and finish by 4:00, and that nothing happens on weekends and holidays, and that we request that no contractor vehicles park in front of our house at 407 without our written consent. Next, there's something that is important to us, too. We need to further study the removal of the north cinder block wall in the existing carport. This structure has been in place for decades and supports the existing hillside. The grading plan referenced in the application indicates that any cavity will be filled with earth and planted to prevent erosion. However, this might not be sufficient support, and slippage may occur with time. Erecting our own retaining wall would be ineffective and difficult because there is a two-foot minimum setback requirement for retaining walls. So it is our expectation that the project will not affect the southern border of our property in a negative way, and that the Fosters will take measures to protect that slope, including a replacement retaining wall if that's indicated. Finally, you know, the redwood tree has gotten a lot of conversation. I think when it's all said and done, we do appreciate the serious consideration that it's being given. And I think in spite of all of its negatives, we do continue to support the tree. The rationale that a new house is more important than a signature tree certainly seems unusual and morin. And it's true that John and I do benefit directly from the tree, but we also think its preservation is important to the ecosystem of the neighborhood because it supports numerous animals and microorganisms. In closing, I'd like to thank the commission and the town of Corte Madera for hearing us out and for making sure that neighbors are considered and protected during major projects such as this. Thank you.
Thank you for your brevity, Sue. I appreciate that you had a lot to say. Next.
Okay, we have Alton. Alton, I'm going to lower your hand and allow you to talk.
Great, thanks. Hi, this is Alton Low. I live up the hill on Upper Chapman and have done so for the last six years. And, you know, there's been a number of improvements to the, to the area since I've lived there. So I thank the commission for approving all of those projects. This is the first house that I see on my way home when I turn onto the street. And so needless to say, I was delighted to see the story polls go up and know that the current kind of blighted situation there was going to be improved. The design I've seen today appears very attractive, very tasteful, and fitting for the neighborhood. And I think Commissioner Metcalf said it best when, when she said, yes, despite that, that there, the tree has got to go down. The plan that's been put in place to improve more than compensates for that. And I think, you know, any development involves trade-offs. And I think here is absolutely to the benefit of the neighborhood. And I really very much look forward to seeing this project start to get constructed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alton.
Lastly, for raised hands, we have Peter Schwartz. Peter, I mean, allow you to talk and lower your hand. You may have to unmute.
And also, if you mind adding video, I'm fine with that. I shaved today.
May get a notification asking you to join. Just click that, and you may need to turn on your video.
Okay, great. Appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm also very pleased that the Fosters are moving, plan to move ahead with this project in large part because existing structures are beyond derelict. They're frankly incredibly dangerous on several points. One, there's no fire sprinklers or typical fire safety things in modern homes in the current structures, and they are kind of a rotting mess. A good friend of ours lived in one of those units for many years, and I was blown away that the town let them stand. The other part that I appreciate in the, the new project is that the water flow through the site currently is horrible when we have large rains. And there's flooding that occurs at the base of the property because of the water actually flowing under the existing homes. And the new water plan eliminates a horrible situation. Really appreciate the Fosters reclaiming some of the water for use on landscaping on the side. The other thing is, the new garage will actually improve safety on that corner because the current garage that's there is in a complete blind spot for people swinging around the turn. Where with the new garage setback, it'll actually be safer. And having lived at 301 Chapman for 27 years, I'm incredibly familiar with traffic going in the area. Also, yeah, I met a couple times with the Fosters, and they've walked through the site, the plans and everything. And we, both my wife and I really appreciate the thoughtful design they've done and really like the Spanish colonial architecture, and in particular with the more modern technological upgrades that they intend on, including. Our only big concern, which is an incredibly small concern, is that any exterior lighting adhered to the state energy code in terms of light trespass off the site. And that's always challenging when you have a home built on a slope. But our relationship with the Fosters is very open, and they're incredibly responsive to neighborhood concerns. And with that, I think we really look forward to the onset of construction on this particular project. And it'll be a welcome addition to what has been a crumbling property. So with that, I think, again, thank you for the opportunity. I will have one last comment to Peter. Is, when I was on the commission, we talked about the tyranny of elevations. And I have made the suggestion, and this goes for Adam, that it would really convey a better sense of what's going on with these buildings if things were done in perspective, showing the vegetation plan rather than just the bare elevations, because it's very misleading. And particularly, there's questions about how does it look from the street? And a bare elevation doesn't tell you what it looks like from the street. And thankfully, the landscape architect filled us in in terms of how there's retaining walls and foliage and setbacks. And so that's one thing that I would hope the design teams would provide their clients as a little bit more of a 3D perspective. So with that, again, thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter. Appreciate your comments. Tracy.
Do not see any, I'm, I'm sorry, there is an additional raised hand. I'm not sure if this is Lisa or Paul, but I'm going to unmute you, allow you to talk, and lower your hand. You may have to also unmute yourself.
There we go. I muted. Hi, this is, this is Lisa at 401 Chapman. And I just wanted to first thank the commission and also thank the Fosters. I feel like we felt very well-informed. Again, like others have said, they've been quite responsive to any questions we've had. We've been in open dialogue about many of the things that were raised tonight. I think two things that we, a couple of things that we really appreciate about the project. One, one is just the walkway that was mentioned, that is owned by the town of Corte Madera. And I realize that... And I realize that's going to be a separate process to request from the town and improvements be made to it. But we've had a couple of instances of friends or other people visiting who've actually fallen on the walkway. It's in significant disrepair and it's just an ongoing concern we have for safety of visitors or other people that are up and down the pathway. So it's just a big relief to hear there might be an option there for us to jointly improve that. The second piece is just the design of the house being nestled into the hillside. Appreciated hearing from the architect that that's been apparent to us in the consultation done with the designs and just have appreciated the, both aesthetic, but also the interest in keeping it right sized for the property and have greatly appreciated it not building up and being contained within the space and into the hillside. So that's been great for us. So overall, just very supportive of the project. And Martha, it was actually, I don't know if this is the right place. I'm sorry, this is like my first meeting, so I'm like, wow, this is quite the experience. But Martha, I know we submitted something to you saying we were supportive of the project. There was just one comment you made earlier, and maybe this isn't the forum for it because it has to do with the sewer, but I do believe there are actually a couple of easements for the sewer. Maybe this isn't the time for it. And I'm not actually sure. We've, it was sort of, when we purchased the house just a couple of years ago, we had a title company, you know, do a report for us. And there were a couple easements that they noted for us for sewer purposes. And I don't know if you need that information from us or whatever. I'd be happy to send it along, but that was it. No concern from our end. Whereas as the Fosters mentioned, we're actually in conversation with them and some of the neighbors about like, how are we going to resolve the couple sewer system that we have? But yeah, so that's it. So supportive of the project, so thankful the Fosters for the consultation.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Tracy, do we have anyone else with a comment or a hand up?
Sorry about that. I had an in-person visitor. I don't see any additional hands up. Give everyone a second. No emails have been received.
Well, I think we've given plenty of notice to this, so we will close the public comment section for this particular item at 403 Chapman and we'll take it back to the commission. So at this point, we can also revisit a question that came in from Brent Harrison about the timing of the ADU and so forth up there. Would the applicant care to respond to Mr. Harrison's question about the ADU timing and the grading and the roofline?
Yes, we'd be happy to. Commissioner Chase, I'm not sure I understood the totality of the question, so please forgive me and I'm happy to have the questioner, Mr. Harrison, I believe, repeat the question just so I get it all. But the intention is that the ADU would be built simultaneously with the main residence. The roofline is contiguous. They are separated by a small walkway that closes off the courtyard to the northern side, a roofed passageway, I should say. The grading plan that has been submitted, you know, still will be reviewed by the building department, I believe. And Martha could maybe help me understand the procedure in its totality, but I believe all the grading and engineering work that we're going to be doing will be still subject to building permits. There's been an initial review of the grading plan, but it's not necessarily the final review. But yes, I think the intention is to build ADU at the same time and grade the property at the same time as the main residence.
That answered the question, I think, fairly well. Thank you. So I'm going to bring it back to the commissioners at this moment and I'm going to start with Mr. Rizzo and your commentary. Do you have any questions you want to ask anybody after all of that or you want to go straight into your commentary?
No, I think I'm ready to go. I just, I do want to comment about the ADU and I had asked that question to Martha and the ADU is, it fits within the, with the design guidelines for an FAR, for the FAR and you could confirm that, Martha, I believe. So even if it wasn't an ADU, it can still be approved as a single-family home. It's just that the application for the ADU can come in anytime after that, correct?
Correct. So the ADU requires a building permit. So the applicant can either submit one building permit for both the primary residence and the ADU, or they could break it up into two separate building permits. In this case, based on what Andrew Foster said, it sounds like they plan to submit one building permit simultaneously, which will be reviewed by the town. And then when the town's reviewing the ADU, will be verifying that it meets all the objective standards that are in the AD ordinance as part of our review.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that it, the square footage of it actually is included, is it included in the FAR calculation currently? Because it does fit within, which is say, it was a single-family residence without an ADU, they're actually under that and they would be allowed to actually build an extra 800 square feet per the state and local code.
Yeah, so the allowable floor area for the property is 40%. And then the project is just over 36% floor area. That does include the ADU. And then our AD ordinance would allow for an exceedance of 800 square feet. So if the primary residence was at max FAR of .4, they could still propose an 800 square foot ADU, which is consistent with the state law. In this case, the primary residence and the ADU combined are underneath the 40% standard.
Okay. So briefly, I just wanted to say I'm delighted that the Fosters are working with all of their neighbors on some of these utility issues. These sites are old, they're, you know, all of the documents are hard to find, you know, there's hidden easements, there's all sorts of things. A power line going over a house through a redwood tree is definitely a safety hazard. So I'm glad that they're going to be resolving all those issues that are kind of more communal issues that aren't a part of this application, but I just wanted to note that. Back to the privacy issues, I really feel that the way the house is designed into the hill and the way the amount of privacy is established from the landscaping and the fact that the courtyard, the majority of the living space is on the other side of the house towards the staircase or the south side, that I think it's designed in a way that's going to give the neighbors to the north the most privacy that it can with a new, with a new house. There's just minimum, there's minimum windows on the, on the north side of the proposed property with all the landscaping. I don't, I don't think, I think that they can achieve a fair bit of privacy that way. And I'm glad that the applicant had addressed these issues and it sounds like the neighbors at 407 are going to be amenable to maybe, maybe putting a fence up. I think that they're going to resolve this and it's my hope that they do. There's nothing worse living next to a neighbor that you guys are not happy with each other and you're going to have two houses next to one. The other thing is the tree. Unfortunately, I'm probably going to, I'm going to, I hate to say this, but I'm going to support the removal of the tree. Trying to get this tree to a, to a point where it's going to be safe by pruning it, it's going to eliminate the, the privacy factor that it gives. I think the root systems I brought up earlier are really going to be a problem in the future. They're just going to go right into those, there's going to be tile drains and all sorts of drainage around that, around that property that, that are going to get just destroyed. So I would say that, you know, unfortunately, I'm going to support the removal of that tree. I love redwoods. And as far as the design, I, I really appreciate the flexibility with the ADU. I think that this is something that we're going to see more of in the future. People are looking for more space for themselves to work from home or either a caregiver to come in, come in and, or renters to subsidize the cost of living up here. I thought the courtyard was a great idea for, for privacy. And I would say that citing the, it looks like all the, the reason I asked about the bedrooms is you've got bedrooms next to bedrooms. So hopefully the time of night where everybody's in bed is at the same time and the living spaces are on the other side of the adjacent houses. So again, I think that was a really good way to address privacy issues for the two adjacent neighbors. And I can agree more with Peter. I think a perspective would have been great just because bringing that on your eye level down this human scale with some of that landscaping and some of those beautiful architectural elements that the architect design would have really helped out bring down the massing of that front facade. So if anybody's had a chance to look at, at the architect's website, I could assure you that his projects are beautiful and the quality of work speaks for itself, which is important to me because this type of building has been done in some cases in California and not a tasteful way. This is a beautiful, tasteful project, I think, with high-quality finishes and, and I would also say that it does fit very nicely with the architectural styles and the vernacular of California and some of the local structures. So, you know, I really liked the project. John, I'd like to support the findings for this project.
Thank you, Jim. You've said a lot of good things there, important to say. Margaret, I'd like to hear your thoughts on this project.
At the outset, I'll say that I think it's a very beautiful home. And I think it's a great, it's terrific that you can build the ADU at the same time as constructing the home in the same style of it because that's not always done. And it makes an ADU in the neighborhood very, very acceptable and just part of the whole landscape. When I drove into that neighborhood, I had some real concerns and it strikes me as being so odd that, that the concern about planting, you know, non-invasive, non-fire or fire-retardant kinds of plants, because that whole neighborhood is overhung with overgrowth. And I don't think worrying about, I mean, I think it's a great concern to have and it's wonderful, but that whole neighborhood is so fire-prone with, with the narrow streets and the hairpin turns. I think, I don't know how effective the conversation is with planting native, non-native, whatever. It's the whole neighborhood that's very, very dangerous. And I, that's what I was struck with when I, when I drove there. I think the removal of, of buildings that are clearly hazardous to my mind and replacing them with very ecologically tuned in to all the safety codes is a terrific boon for that neighborhood. I, I have a lot of sort of hesitations because I think there are so many outstanding issues going on here and I don't think it's part of the planning commission, but it makes me uneasy that you have PG&E issues, you have the tree issues, you have sewer line issues, you have water flow issues. I have an issue with the, with the, just the fact that there's no way to get, for someone to walk around there. There's no improvement in the pedestrian kind of access to the, to the street. And when I was there, there were people walking in the middle or on the side of the street. It's a narrow street. There's no place to turn around and there are no turnouts and it's just, to me, it's, it's just hazardous and frightening, especially if children or elderly people are going to be involved there. So I'm just uneasy about things that I know we, we can't deal with, but it just seems to me that it just does play into a planning commission sort of view of a project. I commend you on, as I said, the beautiful building and because it's come up before, the fact that you got this far during the pandemic and you got your plans into the planning department and you got people to look at them and you got your architect working and everyone else working during the pandemic. And I congratulate you for that kind of effort. I really do. And I think that, I think that's pretty much what I have to say right now.
All right. Thank you, Margaret. We'll come back to you if you wish. I'll move on to Dr. Bundy.
Yeah, the goal and what I had hoped would be that there was a way to redesign the project and save that tree. I think the project as it sits now provides a great deal of privacy for 407, just the way it's configured and designed. And if it was changed to allow that tree to stay, it wouldn't be as good a project and it probably wouldn't provide as much privacy to 407. So I reluctantly will go along with the request to remove the tree. My, I guess, only hope that since the tree has provided a lot of ecological services for the community there, that you could be able to take it down and actually mill the redwood and potentially use it as beams in your new home. So I can make the findings for the project.
All right, Bob, very succinct. All right. Phyllis, you're there.
Should I respond to Commissioner Bundy? Should I respond to that?
Not necessary.
Not necessary. That's all right. Thank you. Thank you. That's all right. Phyllis?
As I said earlier, I like the project. I think it is well-placed on the site. It is back from the street. The landscaping is extremely attractive. I like the interior courtyard. The materials look great. The fact that there's going to be the water retention, I think, is very important to the project, especially one in the hills. As I said before, I am adamantly opposed to retaining the redwood tree. And I did notice, if I may ask, you may have this answer or maybe Martha, Peter, the resolution, I didn't see where the tree was mentioned in it. Should it be?
Say that again, Phyllis.
The resolution that we have.
Yes.
Talks about the demolition of the existing residences and the carport, the construction of the home, the residence, et cetera, et cetera. And it doesn't make mention of the tree. And I'm wondering if the tree should be mentioned within the resolution itself or is that a separate item for us to take up? How do we handle that?
Martha, I'm reading that it is in the draft resolution. Can you put it up on that?
So I think Phyllis is referring to the title, the resolution title. It's not mentioned there. It is mentioned in the findings. So there's a discussion of the redwood tree in finding two. We typically don't mention removal of vegetation as part of the resolution finding, but it is discussed in the resolution findings.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be named in that section that is in the matter of, et cetera, et cetera?
No.
It does come up and it is discussed about the removal. Okay, I can make all the findings and I look forward to seeing the work begin.
Thank you, Phyllis. I will state out of the gate that I can make all the findings for this, but I would like to do a couple of things here. One is I would like to thank the Fosters for their extraordinary efforts in collating and reaching out to the neighbors and doing such a fine job of presentation. I would like to say this is an example of how it ought to be done and you've gone to great lengths to do that. You have some issues that are certainly contentious and that I hope you and the Hubertys can get along in the future with this. I think that she had a request about a wood fence over there. Would you guys entertain the idea of putting up a construction screening fence along the property line while you're doing the work?
I don't know. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes, Susan Huberty approached us. Yes, Susan Huberty approached us with a proposal that we considered yesterday about the construction of a fence. We welcomed the Hubertys to do so and we offered to subsidize 50% of the cost of its construction on their property. We might install a fence at some point in the future, but our intention was not to create a classic privacy screen, in other words, a solid fence, but to instead continue the wrought iron open fence that's on the southern, proposed for the southern border of the property so as to have open vistas. We understand the Hubertys may feel differently and want, and we do know they cherish their privacy. I don't think it's overstating to say that and we understand that. And so we welcome and would help them subsidize the creation of fence on their property. At this stage, I'm not, I think Ms. Huberty's reply suggested they might be open to that, but I don't want to speak for her or the Hubertys more broadly. Oh, and as far as a construction screen, I think we don't have an immediate plan for that. That's a detail that we need to figure out, but we could put up a, some sort of visual barrier. I'm afraid it'd probably be like orange plastic in the short run, and that may be less attractive than just a barrier in the short run.
Typical construction fencing with the green mesh or the black mesh would be the appropriate thing to put up there if you're not going to do a.
Certainly can do that temporarily. And we, again, pay for half of the cost of the construction of a fence, a more permanent fence on the Hubertys' property.
So what I hear from you guys is that you're very willing to work with them and continue to do so. And I don't think we need to bother by adding any other conditions into the resolution because you're really front and center with the neighbors and trying to take care of the neighborhood issues. So I think that's commendable and it's a necessity, frankly, to do what you're doing. If you weren't doing it, it would be problematic for the neighborhood. So I commend you for that. I have extensive experience with trying to work with redwoods and we've seen them cause so much damage. So I think it's a great accomplishment that the redwood has to go if you're going to have a property and proper buildings on that residence, on that lot and have them survive in 10 or 15 years. The redwood roots would come over and mangle a foundation at some point. So it's unfortunate, but you've created a very viable landscape barrier. And you're going to have to occupy that street with a crane one day to get in those large oaks, but that's okay. Or to move that large palm. So I commend you for taking this on. I think it's a great design. You've thought it through. You've got a good design team. They've put a lot of effort into this. And I think that you should be overall generally commended for making a great effort. So I will make the findings and I would entertain commissioners to make a motion to adopt this resolution 20-010.
Eric, could I just say one other thing?
Certainly.
First of all, and I forgot to say this to begin with, I wanted to say that when I was there, the thing that I noticed, and I think it's a compliment to the Hubertys, that they have cleared all the stuff, I mean, their property really is fire-cleared. And I commend them for, as I read, they were trying to install kind of a meadow look to their area, but I think that deserves being commended because they really have been very cognizant of the fire issues around their home. I'd also, I don't know if we can do that, but I guess I would feel better knowing that they feel like their concerns have been heard by the commission. I feel like when you, they had clearly very, very difficult decisions and they went through a lot of stress with their neighbors and I understand that kind of stress. And it's sometimes when you only have 15 minutes to say your piece in front of the commission, excuse me, three minutes to say your piece and the applicants are saying and presenting so much more, I would feel good to know that they think they've been heard by us and their concerns considered. I don't know if that's.
Right. Just on that, thank you, Commissioner Mendel. I would offer a couple of things in that regard. One is to note Chairman Chase, that I think Sue did raise her hand again and Tracy alerted me of that. So just be aware of that. I'm not sure if you want to reopen the public comment, but that's one thing to note. I will say, in regards to Commissioner Mendel's comment, one of the things that was requested was for the commission to look at the construction hours. And so I did want to raise that because, as I think we've discussed in the past, but just to clarify, in the past, the planning commission had more stringent construction hours than the noise ordinance allowed for construction activities. But since the update to the noise ordinance, we've gone back and been consistent with what the noise ordinance allows for construction. So it's actually was now more flexible than the commission used to be. So I believe, I wrote this down, that the Hubertys were asking for construction hours of eight to four, no weekend or holiday work. And if you look in our conditions of approval right now, as part of the attached resolution that Martha drafted, construction, I'm sorry, condition of approval number seven, it talks about seven to five, Monday through Friday, and 10 to five, Saturday and Sunday. It does note that no work is allowed on legal holidays. So that's the, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And given that Commissioner Mendel raised this question of whether they were satisfied, I think it's appropriate to consider whether you want to see any modifications to the conditions of approval.
I would suggest a modification of that. I think weekend work and starting at seven in the morning is very.
Well, right. And we, just what the commission used to have was seven to five, Monday through Friday. Did not allow work on Sundays, I believe. And then weekends also, it's 10 to five. And that's how it's, that's how the noise.
Is that what's allowed now?
Yeah, 10 to five.
On the weekends?
Yes.
Wow. I would suggest a modification of that, especially in that neighborhood. I, as I said, I think that, you know, starting at eight o'clock in the morning and ending at four o'clock, most construction usually ends at four anyway, the construction I've seen. But weekends, I think, in that neighborhood, that's a residential neighborhood with people who work and they only have their weekends at home to enjoy their neighborhood. I don't, I think weekend should not have work going on.
Right. And we've talked about this in the past of sort of the trade-off between the longer construction overall schedule versus sort of the hours on the weekends and whatnot. So there is a balancing act there. But in any case, the other thing to note is that work, while construction activity is allowed seven to five on weekdays and 10 to five on weekends, it does require that actually, usually people wrap up their actual construction activities by 4:30. They cannot be actually working on the site after the 5:00 PM. So it's.
You know, the other thing that is that all those construction vehicles and there's no place to park them and on weekends when people are out on the streets, I just think that's not fair to the entire neighborhood.
There is also a condition of approval number five, talks about a construction management plan and parking plan that has to be approved by the planning and building and public works departments. So that is part of something that we'll review.
I'm going to propose to the other commissioners then about this then, that any construction company and the owner of the property needs to have viable production and so forth, that the workers need to get in an eight-hour day. So with a half-hour lunch, that is eight and a half hours working time directly. So I would propose that if nothing else, it'd be 7:30 to 4:30 so that there would be a half an hour swing time there for people to, you know, be able to get clear of the site and so forth. On weekends, yes, I understand that the 10 to five would be an infringement, but, you know, I think that we have to balance the property owners' need to get the project done with the, and sometimes not having some weekend available on Saturdays extends the project out. But I would like to hear from the other commissioners about this. So I'll go to you, Mr. Rizzo, first about this issue.
Yeah, I was going to bring up the same thing, that the extension of the timeline is sort of a, you know, would you rather have this project go on for 12 months or 10 months? You know, if you shorten the timeline. Peter, did you say that you were saying nothing on Saturday or you're saying, I mean, you're proposing nothing on Saturday or limited hours on Saturday?
I'm saying limited hours on Saturday. And that it might be 10 to 4:30 or something like that on Saturdays so that they could at least get in six-hour.
Sure. So if there's some needs to happen, it can, the construction can continue and so Monday that the other trades can come in, could be a problem.
Exactly.
Yeah. I mean, as long as they get eight hours in, they do tend to, you know, there's quiet time unloading the trucks and loading the trucks that are typically a half hour, 45 minutes per end of the day. And at least if they can get some limited time on Sundays or Saturdays, that'd be a good idea because I know that it does cost property owners money if sometimes something needs to be wrapped up by Saturday. It just has to happen. Concrete pours, all sorts of things like that, so.
Right. Okay. Dr. Bundy?
Yeah, I was unaware that the construction was allowed on Sunday or that it was allowed to take place if there was minimal noise involved, which would be just, you know, people doing painting or something like that. So I didn't realize that Sunday was permitted.
What would be your preference for work hours?
I think this is a difficult topic to take on as part of a specific project. It seems like there ought to be work hours that are consistent throughout the town, you know, whether it's in my neighborhood, your neighborhood, or this particular project. So I'm not sure what we're trying to do here. We're trying to tailor it to this specific project? Are we talking about revising our whole work hours ordinance?
Right. Good. All right. Phyllis, do you have any thoughts about this?
Yes, I would eliminate Sunday. I understand working on Saturday and the, starting at 10:00. And 4:30 or 5:00 for the break time. But I would eliminate Sunday.
Okay. All right. So you would be in favor of keeping seven to five workdays, Monday through Friday, and then 10 to five Saturdays and no work on Sunday?
Or even starting at 7:30 on the weekdays. I think you mentioned 7:30 to 4:30.
Yeah, it's kind of a tight timeline, but.
I could see doing like 7:30 to 5:00.
Yeah.
That just gives a little bit more time for cleanup before they leave because I think cleanup's important.
Right. Well, you know, noise-producing work is one thing. The town would have to go a long ways toward saying people have to be off-site and gone by a certain time. We're not in that realm yet. Some communities do say that, but Corder Medera doesn't do that thankfully. So, you know, people can be there but just not working. So I think that the work hours are important. Not everybody starts at 7:30. Sometimes you need to stagger people in and out of a job site. So that's why seven to five is a good thing in many ways. And I appreciate Bob's commentary about, you know, trying to single something out. How would you feel about, you'd be okay with removing Sunday from the?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Margaret, I hear in your voice you would eliminate Sunday with certainty from the work hours.
I absolutely would. And as I said, I think Saturday is important too. Sunday isn't the only Sabbath that people celebrate. Saturday is a Sabbath for people who are Jewish.
Yes. Understood. Jim, any further commentary?
Not really. I mean, I could see the Sunday being eliminated. Nobody likes to be under construction seven days a week next to something. It's tough to have a half-day and get anything done, any economy of scale there. So if you guys, if we got a majority that wants to eliminate Sunday on this project and if, you know, perhaps in a later date, we should talk about, you know, making an addendum to the ordinance because Sundays is sort of a, I didn't realize Sundays you were able to work either. I thought it was on Saturday, to be honest with you.
Yeah. Okay. So I think that we have a consensus that we would, could eliminate Sunday as a workday for the project. And I think that, anything else, Adam, that you feel you want to bring up?
No, I think the other concerns that were raised were the existing block wall and that will be, will ensure through the building permit process and our engineers' review of how that removal, removal of that structure and make sure that that retaining, it's shored up, that any dirt is shored up and protected during construction activities. And I believe, you know, there are, I think you've addressed the other issues that were discussed in the three minutes, but.
Well, I appreciate Margaret bringing up the acknowledgement of the Hubertys and their issues. As we've pointed out, some of those issues are not within our purview, but the town will be taking many of them quite seriously as they go through the building permit application process and all of that does get addressed quite extensively. So with that said.
Peter?
Yes.
Because I'm not physical, I can't raise my hand. When you talk about issues, what about the shed not only being on the property of 403, but also not having the five-foot setback even if it was entirely on the Hubertys' property? Isn't that part of approving this as far as there is a structure partially on the property that's going to be developed?
I think that I will let Martha reply to that or Adam reply to that. It is outside of our, it's a negotiation between these property owners, but you guys could go ahead at planning and respond to that.
Yes, so the way code enforcement works in the town is it's based on a complaint received. So if there is a structure located in a rear yard that doesn't meet a required five-foot setback, then the town would investigate upon a formal complaint being made by a neighbor. So without a formal complaint, we generally do not get involved. Adam, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I'd just say it doesn't really, we don't view this as affecting the application in front of the commission. So it's, you know, that's a separate thing that planning staff and building staff will review and sort of deal with as a separate issue and item.
Okay, yes, absolutely.
I would only add that the town really isn't a position, is not in a position to decide real property issues, who owns what, who has an easement to do what. We can't really know the respective property ownership interests of the two neighbors and whether or not the 407 owners have a right to keep the shed where it is. That's a private civil matter. That's a private civil matter.
Got it. Thank you very much, and I appreciate that. The, from a personal experience, the Fosters could give them a right to trespass, a revocable right to trespass, that would solve the problem. So I will entertain a motion with the condition for work hours as we've discussed.
Peter, can you clarify, was it 7:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, and then 10 to 5:00 on Saturday?
Correct. Commissioners, someone will make a motion, please?
You wish for me to make the motion, Peter?
Please.
Okay. Resolution number 20-010. In the matter of design review application, PL 2020-0018, the demolition of two existing residences and a carport, and the construction of a new 2,582-square-foot, two-story residence with a 626-square-foot garage, attached garage, and storage area at 403 Chapman. I would move this motion forward with the following changes on page. It didn't go to the page. Under construction number seven, the hours of construction to be amended as follow. Monday through Friday, the hours shall be limited from 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and will be 10 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, and there will be no construction on Sunday.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jim.
I think we'll start with Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bendo?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizzo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalf?
Yes.
And Chairman Chase?
Yes, please.
I'll read the appeal rights. There's a 10-day appeal period, which will end next Friday at 5:00 p.m. There's a $300 appeal fee in an application form, and it can be submitted to either the Planning Department or the Town Clerk located at 300 Tamalpais.
Thank you very much, Martha. I'm going to propose that we take a five-minute break here before coming back to the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're all back and accounted for, everybody's online. At this moment, we have to take a vote to start a new item after 9:30, so.
I moved to start a new item.
Okay.
I will ask the commissioners to vote on this. So Commissioner, do we need a second for that, actually?
I'll second it.
All right, Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bendo?
No.
Commissioner Rizzo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalf?
Aye.
And Chairman Chase?
Yes. All right.
So the, my recollection is, to continue past that, we would need unanimous consent.
Well, actually, so we'll have another vote at 10:00 p.m., so in 10 minutes to continue. It does not need to be unanimous at 10:00 p.m., but at 10:30, it would need to be unanimous. And then the meeting will stop at 11:00 p.m. pursuant to the commission's rules and procedures.
Okay, one day stop it at 10:30.
I thought it was at 10:00 that it had to be unanimous. We need a majority at 9:30, and then at 10:00, we needed.
It's a majority to start a new item after 9:30. It's a majority to continue that new item past 10:00 p.m. And then it's a unanimous to continue that item past 10:30, meeting stops at 11:00. If we do get to the final item, that would be a, also, a majority would have to vote to start a new item after 9:30.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to go ahead then with this business item, which is a preliminary review of 645 Tamalpais Apartments. This is a preliminary review application for a 2,560-square-foot, three-unit apartment building at 645 Tamalpais Drive. This is also Martha to make a presentation for.
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. The next item before you is a preliminary review for a new three-unit apartment building at 645 Tamalpais. This evening, the commission will be providing the applicant with preliminary feedback on the proposed project, and no formal action will be taken by the commission. The project site is located at 645 Tamalpais. There are commercial buildings located adjacent to the project site. Located to the west is the former Daphne Funeral Home. Located to the east is the Bank of America Building. And then across, to the north across the street is residential. And then located to the south of the project site, across Meadows Suite, is the Lutheran Church. The project site is developed with an existing one-story commercial building. The project site is approximately 20,000 square feet. The existing building is 5,450 square feet. The one-story building is a combination of wood and concrete masonry unit block construction with glass windows, and the windows in the front elevation are par extensive. The structure includes long cantilevered roof beams and overhangs. The project site is Zone C1, a local shopping. And the C1 zoning district does not include separate residential development standards. So in evaluating the project, staff use the commercial standards. The project would require a rear yard, a rear variance. The rear setback is 20 feet, and the applicant's proposal is for 10 feet. The floor area ratio in the C1 district is .34, and the applicant's proposal is for .4. The general plan land use designation does allow for .4 FAR for mixed-use developments that include residential uses. The general plan land use designation for the site is mixed-use commercial, and the allowable uses include office, light industrial, commercial services, and new housing developments. The allowable FAR is .34 for non-residential, and then .4 for a mixed-use development with residential. And the general plan was amended several years ago to allow for an increased FAR for projects that included residential. The zoning for the site is C1, local shopping, and it's intended to create areas for a limited number of retail, commercial goods that serve the day-to-day needs of the people who live in the area. And the allowable FAR is .34. And the C1 zoning district has not yet been updated to reflect the recent change that was made to the general plan, which allows a .4 FAR for mixed-use projects. And residential uses are a conditional, conditional use in this zoning district at locations and densities determined as appropriate by the planning commission and to conform to the general plan. The site is developed with a commercial office building and two parking areas. There is a one-way parking drive aisle adjacent to Tamalpais Drive. And then there also is a rectangular dead-end parking lot that is accessed from the south from Meadows Suite. The applicant is not proposing to alter the number of existing parking spaces. The applicant is proposing to construct a three-unit apartment complex over this rectangular parking lot that's located in between the office building on the project site and the Bank of America Building. I'm going to skip over the slides on the design approach, and I'm going to let the architect discuss their planning and design consideration as part of their presentation in the interest of time. The project includes three two-bedroom units that range in size from 752 square feet to 881 square feet. The second floor includes the living, the entire apartment A, and then the living area of apartment B, and then the entire apartment C. And then the third floor plan includes the sleeping area of apartment B, which is the middle unit, and that includes two bedrooms and two bathrooms. As part of the project, the applicant would be requesting a rear yard setback variance. The required setback is 20 feet, and that is because the property located behind the project site is a residential use. And the applicant is proposing a 10-foot rear yard setback. And the existing commercial building has a setback of 2 feet 7 inches and is a legal non-conforming structure. The applicant would also be requesting a parking variance as well. There are a total of 23.6 parking spaces on the site. There's one shared space between this site and the property to the west. The existing commercial mix of uses requires 27 parking spaces, and the additional residential units would require an additional three parking spaces for a combined total of 30 parking spaces. And so the deficit would be six and a half parking spaces. The mixed-use commercial land use designation does state that there could be reduced parking standards when a site is located less than a quarter of a mile from a transit stop. In this case, the project site is located very close to a transit stop, and there also is parking on both Tamalpais and Meadows Suite. And as part of the project, a parking study would be required. There is a provision in the zoning ordinance that states that when a site is not rectangular, that the zoning administrator determines the setbacks. And in this case, I wanted to point out how staff was interpreting the side yard setback. So this property, you can see the outline of the property boundaries in yellow and then also in red. And staff is interpreting that the yellow would be the front yard setback. And then there is an additional portion of the property boundary that's also adjacent to Tamalpais, shown here, and it's adjacent to the new, to the new structure. And staff is proposing to evaluate this as a side yard setback. And the reason is because of the distance from this portion of the property boundary to the street, it's over 50 feet. And the required front yard setback is 20 feet, and then the required side yard setbacks are zero. And I've included the design, the required design review findings, and also the variance findings, which if the applicant moved forward with a formal application, the commission would need to approve both the design review and variance findings in order to approve the project. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
And I would just add, real briefly, obviously, this is early in the design development of the project, the study session really is to allow commissioners to provide design direction or project direction to the applicant, so the applicant benefits from this process in terms of determining how to move forward with their proposal. So obviously, no resolution or anything. This is purely a conversation and discussion to aid the applicant in its decisions on development of this site.
Okay, with that said, we have to take a vote here at this time to continue to 10:30 as a majority vote. So we'll put that before the commissioners. And Adam, will you poll the commissioners, please?
Sure. Start again with Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bendo?
No.
Commissioner Rizzo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalf?
Yes.
Chairman Chase?
Yes. Okay. Due to the hour, I think I would, unless anybody has some very specific questions, I would move that we go directly to the applicant.
Quick questions?
Yeah.
Swear. I'm just, I have a question. Has, are there any other proposals for the adjacent buildings that have come to the Planning Department that could come to fruition, you know, in the next year? Are there proposals for any development to the B of A building or the funeral? The old funeral home?
The town did approve a design review application to the funeral home in 2019. It was for some site modifications and then painting the building and some kind of minor changes to landscaping and that sort of thing. The, and the use was going to be a yoga studio. They've been working through building permits, but with COVID, there's been delays to the project, and, you know, staff is not certain at this time if that tenant is still moving forward. But there's been no, no projects at Bank of America site.
And my second question is, I know that staff and we have a committee, the Objective Design and Development Standards Committee that you guys are working on, that may change probably more favorable to a site like this. Do we have a timing on possibly when we're going to start seeing maybe some progress with? With, I don't exactly know what to say, because I don't want to call it rezoning, but I know that the standards may change in the next year or two. Adam, do you have timing on that?
Like, yeah, I mean, we're definitely talking into next year. My guess would be spring of 2021 is where we're really going to start actually talking about opportunities for residential development in the town. And then following that, once we have a community process involved with that, then talk about actually potentially changing zoning or whatnot to actually encourage the type of development that we would want to see. So it's, it's sort of a sequential process that I don't see any actual real changes to the zoning and whatnot for some time. Obviously, that may involve also environmental review and so on and so forth. So there's, it can be a lumpy process.
Thank you.
Anybody else with any short questions? Okay. So who's going to make the presentation, Mr. Pearlstein?
Yes, I will. And also, just so everybody realizes, you're probably showing a second, Rich Pearlstein. I have not been cloned, that's my brother Jared, but I think he's logged in through my Zoom account, or office Zoom account. So he's on as well. So given that I think we turn into pumpkins at 10:30, I'm going to go fairly fast. Martha, if you wanted to let me share a screen, I can take you into the model real fast. It might be more useful.
You should be able to share.
Got it, thank you. I'll just bring this straight up. So I'll just get straight into it. And I am not going to talk for very long, because we're much more interested in hearing what you have to say than, at this point, me going on too far. You have the design statement that we put together. Very briefly, the challenge that was given to us by the property owner, Mac, who was also on tonight, was to look at a residential construction between the existing Bank of America over his parking lot. And so the key design challenge was how to mediate between the existing one-story building and the B of A. The B of A structure, I have to imagine is going to be there for many years to come, may change use. And so the real challenge is, what would this look like? And very early on, we decided as a group of three, the three of us, that we were not trying to emulate either of the architectures. As I noted, in a sense, this is kind of a brutalist structure, 1960s heavy concrete. And there wasn't much architecturally that we were going to, for instance, be emulating. What we did choose to do from the existing office structure was to pick up on the notion of these vertical, oops, let's get the right things, these vertical piers to give a sense of verticality, and then to use other materials to infill between, similar to what's happening with the one-story building. The other thing we chose to do, and we looked at flat roof versions, and we looked at gabled roof versions, what we chose was an arch, an arch-type of roof structure that somewhat, as I noted in the statement, emulates the existing upswoops of the skylit spines for the B of A building and the office building, as well as the curved roof of the Pete's and Union Bank building. And so with that, and there are, I know there are some perspectives in the, in the, in my packet, but just to give you a sense, you know, the intent is to really, you know, pull the massing back for the apartment, so that we have the opportunity to use that entry area and green it up. And this is actually fairly appointment important, as I noted, because without it, it becomes very bare. Because without it, it becomes very barren. And so, you know, oftentimes, these kinds of things are the last to be considered here. I think they're initial right up front and very important. On the backside, you know, it does face the rear street. We are somewhat constrained. We do have the church property across the way. Even though it's zoned residential, one might expect that the church property, and it's actually the open space adjacent to the church directly across. So we're asking for that yard variance. We're, we're pretty much in line and slightly back of the existing office building. And so that is the intent as opposed to trying to maintain the full 20 feet. So with that, and with only 24 minutes left, I'm going to stop there and I'm going to take questions. Any comments?
Well, that's very short.
But it's more important that we hear from you.
We will proceed. I have some questions and I will start with the commissioners, so. With Mr. Rizzo, I would very much like to hear your questions or thoughts about this.
Yeah, I think it's the questions. Are we just going to do questions and thoughts? Or are we going to come back to comment?
I, given the hour, I think go ahead and lay it all out there.
Okay. So I, you know, at first glance, it, I felt like it was just a bit out of scale because of the adjacent buildings. It's tough. It's a really tough site. I walk around it almost every day going to coffee. I would, I would, I would love to see all the buildings a little bit closer to the street and engaging a little bit more with the pedestrians at a human scale. I know you're kind of giving a palette here that is difficult to work with. But, um, you know, I almost, that, that one of the reasons I had asked about what, what's going to happen with the zoning is I just think that there's a tremendous opportunity for this site to become so much more than just a three-unit building development. And there could be tremendous opportunity for the ownership to develop something a little bit larger that takes advantage of the full site. And it could help us out as a community with our housing stock issues and, and, and just engagement with the street. I know that the back of that, it's a really nice little street by the church that I feel like the buildings just kind of turn their back on it. And I see you have a little balcony on both sides, which really encourages the people to engage with the street at a human scale, and I appreciate that. But again, I, I would love to see the ownership consider maybe something of a little bit larger of a scale that, that might integrate the commercial building next door.
Okay, that's very short and to the point. Thank you. Ms. Bandell.
I, I kind of had a similar thought about this, but first I want to say that the building itself, I like it. And I think given, I mean, to me, the difficulty of designing something between those two weird structures, in my opinion, I think, I think this fits. It fits in. And I like, I like the way it looks, except for the big, I guess it's the elevator, the 645 thing. That kind of looks a little monolithic to me. But I agree with Mr. Rizzo. It's kind of piecemeal. And I feel like, you know, it's not, I don't know what our opportunity is for a more general or a bigger view of that area. But I think that would sort of be, be more beneficial. I, I don't know what, what opportunity we have there to just look at that whole stretch there. But as I said, the building itself, and I don't really like those, I don't know, the, the outdoor staircases are never my thing. But for, for the site and for the way it had to fit in with those two strange buildings, I think this did a good job of it. The idea of greening up everything is always a good idea to me. That's what I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Bundy.
Yeah, it's a challenge to put something into the architecture that exists there that I guess was all developed by Sanford in the 50s, probably. I think he admired some aspects of Chinese architecture and incorporated that into the buildings that he built there. And so there's sort of a unique fixture, a unique part of Corte Madera. There's not any other architecture quite like that in Marin County that I'm aware of. So I think that this structure, which is, I understand it, is just, is not going to impact either the, any of the other buildings. Nothing's getting torn down and this is just on the parking lot. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. You know, I, I think that the, I like the arched roof and the third story projection above it, you know, somewhat mimics, you know, these upturned slopes to the skylights of the other buildings. So I think it, I think you do have something that fits in there. I certainly think that, I remember seeing the original plans for what was being proposed for the funeral home. And I thought that just looked very generic and bland strip ball type effect. So this, this adds some interest to that whole concept.
Thank you, Bob. Hi, Phyllis.
Yes, I got it fixed. Did you notice?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, looking at this. Unless you planned on, and I'm not suggesting it, tearing down the buildings on either side, you have to work with what you have. And what you have is definitely an improvement over what's on the left and the right. And Bob, you insulted Chinese architecture by comparing it to Chinese architecture. The Chinese did better than that. Very strange roof line. I don't think I've ever seen anything like it and I hope not to see it again. As far as this building goes, I think the arch breaks it up a little bit. The third story breaks it up. I like the part where you've got the numbers and stuff. It gives a vertical look, which I think is much needed, whereas the other two buildings on either side are so horizontal. Between the pillars for the outdoor stairway and I guess that is the elevator. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, that gives a vertical feeling, which kind of takes your eye away from those awful roof lines. And it's giving us three units that we could use for housing. I assume due to the location in a mixed zoned area and their size, they are not going to be terribly expensive. So it gives us more of a moderate rather than high-end apartments. And I think it works. I mean, I also like the idea of the trellises that are in the front that will have things growing up, which will hide the parked cars. That I think helps. The greenery definitely helps. And I don't think there is much you can do with the rear. I think you've done all that can be done. That's it, Peter.
All right. Thank you. I, I agree with the previous comments that this is a handsome, or at least it's a good design for that location. Without the elevator structure on the right, it might start to look like a Sausalito houseboat. But I think that it, the arch upward is, it echoes the other building on the other side of Tamalvista there and so forth. I think it's a good compromise to the problem of solving what to put in between these two distinctive buildings. I do agree with Mr. Rizzo. It does seem like it's wedged in there. And I also agree that you know, if this kind of creativity could be applied to a greater solution for the lots, that would be fabulous. I, I do have a problem with the density that this suddenly creates, whereas there's a bit of a gap in a between the buildings that creates a rhythm going down the street. And when you put this in here, it, it upsets that rhythm. This, this set of buildings has long been the object of discussion as to what might ultimately happen. And having apartments there is probably the best use that we need for the town. We've got 30 feet in height. You can get three stories out of it, or just barely. And if this was more contiguous and incorporated, you know, a greater solution to what we're going to get hit with, according to the newspapers from state housing authority, you know, it'd be great if we could accomplish greater ends with something on this property. But I, I very much applaud the effort for putting a design in between these two buildings, even if it does appear wedged in. I think it's, it's, you know, if, I don't know what we'd say if we had to actually consider it, but I do appreciate what you've done here. I think it's a good solution for a problem of what to do in between these two buildings. I don't know. Your thoughts, Mr. Pearlstein?
Well, and thank you all for your comments. It is true that in, in a macro scale, if, for instance, the B of A was, was not a separate property and the funeral home was not a separate property, wouldn't it be really interesting in a, in a very hypothetical way for something else to happen? But we do have the very fixed reality of Bank of America building and the commercial building, the structure, which is very serviceable and represents a valuable resource to the community. And I understand, I believe it's fully leased and it's a vital resource. And so the, the challenge is, and as one of, one of you just mentioned, it's the opportunity to, to gain what we think could be three nice rental units added to the housing stock in Corte Madera. Adjacent to the free, freeways, more importantly, adjacent to the transit stops, the bus pad. So it's providing in our minds something valuable to the town in what we'd like to think is, is a reasonable manner, given the realities of this property as well as the adjacent properties with, of course, again, the constraints of the parking, you know, maintaining the existing parking. And Commissioner Rizzo, I appreciated your comment about in, in, again, in, in a, in a hypothetical, wouldn't it be nice if we could engage with the street more? Absolutely agree with that. But we have this built-in of parking and the nature of the site. So with all of that and given the constraints, our sense is that this is probably about the right project. And, and I think we heard some, some tentative support there and we appreciated the comments. And I guess then the question is, if we came back, we're, we're of course looking for hopefully and going away with positive feedback. And then Jared and Mac and I will be talking with the next few days. Then the decision point would be, do we go fully ahead and set this up for a full application, go through the parking study and the other things that are necessary to make a full application? So, so I do sense that we're hearing a qualified preliminary support for the concept and for support for what is currently currently proposed, understanding that this is not, this is not an approval. This is not a vote. It's just an advisory.
Yes. So I want to ask staff here, I, I want to be clear on the fact that these are three separate properties that we're looking at here. There are three different owners. Is that what I'm hearing or there's one owner?
There are three different owners. So 601 Tamalpais has a separate owner, as does the Bank of America site. So the, the current project site, the office building, and then this apartment building would be located on, on this site. So there are three distinct property owners.
Martha, I think maybe it's helpful that, I know you've done a little bit of research on, when you were talking about the, I guess, the westernmost property, the retail and the yoga studio on that designer view of how, what, what the historical records at least told us about what happened here, because I think that, that is important in how we got to the point where we are today, which is a challenge.
Yeah. So the, the site was developed by a single, single developer back in, I think it was the early 60s. And originally it was going to be the bank and then it was a post office and then I think an office building. And then at some point, the, the funeral home came into the mix and occupied the 601 Tamalpais. So it, you know, I think in an ideal world, if, if this was all one parcel, would probably make redevelopment projects easier and smoother. But you know, this is, as Rich mentioned, it is kind of the context of what does currently exist.
I think it did, it did get subdivided at some point. And it's not exactly clear how that happened. The property lines actually cut through parking spaces and, and don't really have any sort of, other than they contain each, each site has one of the buildings, each parcel has one of the buildings. There was no other real. It, it's a little unclear how they went about that process, given that it seems to create, seemed to have created some non-conforming conditions with respect to parking and whatnot. And this, Lakeside, I think also cut through at some point the street.
Yeah. And then there is the, the, the property just west of 601 Tamalpais is kind of a little parking area, which is a separate parcel as well. And that parking is, is for the, was for the former funeral home. So Adam is correct, that kind of our records on the lot split that occurred are a little, little spotty. We do know it was subdivided into those, those four parcels, but the, the record is not entirely clear on kind of how that happened or exactly when it happened.
The green highlight that you're seeing on the screen right now, this skewed westerly property boundary is somewhere between the funeral home building starts about where my cursor is circling. So at this peculiar skew, somebody chose to draw the property line at that point when they subdivided. Likewise, for, at the Bank of America condition, and the line was not necessarily drawn parallel to the Bank of America, but probably perpendicular to the Meadowsuite line, which is goofy. But for better or worse, this is what we're, what we have today.
Yeah. It's all a little bizarre. And it must be the result of some attorneys working on this, I would bet, but.
Three children. That's what happened. It was built, yeah. I'm going to give you each a building.
Yeah. And then, and I should say, it does relate to, you know, the parking variance that would be needed. I mean, it's already currently a non-compliant, Martha, maybe it's worth highlighting that a little bit. The existing condition, I believe, is non-compliant with respect to parking. And I know you, you touched on this in the staff report. This would, I guess, slightly exacerbate it, but by three spaces. Is that right, Martha?
That is correct. So currently the, the required parking, I believe, is 27 spaces and there's 23 and a half spaces. And then there would be an additional three required for, for these three units, one space per unit. So the shortage would be six and a half spaces. So it would take a non-conforming parking and make it even less conforming.
I, I was speaking with Mac earlier today and he pointed out that here's an area, this is taken from Google Maps. Who knows what this was shot the last year or two. But his point was that during the daytime, there's always, even in peak piers, I guess, there's always parking along Tamalpais. So the street parking here with not much demand for those spaces means that parking around here tends to work fairly well. That's my understanding.
And if the applicant moved forward, there would be a parking analysis that would be required where parking counts would be taken, both the site and also the adjoining streets as well as part of the, the process.
I, I think that, and I used to take the bus into the city from that bus pad. And I think the problem is people driving to that bus pad and parking along there, because that's actually what I used to do. Parking along Meadowsuite and parking in the Bank of America kind of area, trying to get by with that. I think, I think during the day, people leaving their cars, there might be an issue.
Well, I tend to think that with three apartments in an ideally Well, I tend to think that with three apartments in an ideally located spot, that people who commute to the city or don't need a car would be best suited for these apartments. But you never know, we have to follow the rules. But for my part, I think that, now that I understand the context a little better, I think that putting this building in there would be as good as anything, as I could see going on in this parcel right there. And I would, I would welcome an application. That would be my perspective. I would ask the other commissioners to voice their opinion on this.
I would agree with that, Peter.
I support it.
Right.
I would agree.
Are you there, Mr. Bundy? Dr. Bundy?
Yes, I would support that.
Okay, so it's, you know, given that this is not cohesive there and that you've got these disparate elements and the likelihood of somebody buying up the whole mess and turning it into something we really would like to see is not very likely.
Was, was there any talk about building above the commercial building? Rich?
We actually did not really have any conversations with Mac about that. Mac, I think, has been on and muted. And Mac, is this something that you would want to speak on if so, that you could unmute and maybe speak? But to my recollection, Jared and I, I don't think had that conversation with him. He may have used that on his own. Mac, you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Yes, I can hear you. Yeah, I, I honestly never thought about it because it's just, it doesn't pencil out for me. It's fully occupied, and I've had long tenants in there. You know, they're very happy to stay there. And I, I don't intend to kick them out to do a big project. So they are very happy occupying that offices, you know. So, I mean, they have been, they've been there for over 20 years, most of them.
Of course, the other thing to consider is, considering, even with this, we would be asking for preference for those few spaces.
Yeah.
Adding additional, a second floor over the commercial, even if it was residential, of course, continues to exacerbate that parking challenge, which is the nature of parking and, and the way our zoning requirements run.
And the second, the second thing is, we are sharing the front one-way parking with our neighbors. How are we going to create a project like that? You know, it's impossible. It's kind of legally, it's going to be a battle. We're sharing, yeah. The front, you know, we're sharing with the other two properties.
So, Mr. Pearlstein, do you feel like you have some feedback?
I think we do, yeah. Mac, do you, do you feel good about what you've heard tonight?
Yes, I feel good about it, yeah.
Okay, great. No, this has been very useful for us. We've been looking forward to getting some feedback, and I think we heard some, some helpful comments.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, being that it is 10:30 on the dot, we have to take a vote to continue, and it must be unanimous.
Okay.
I know the outcome.
I do, too. But I think I'll, I'll ask it anyway. So we'll start again with Commissioner Bundy.
No.
All right. That will do it. I don't think we need to take the rest of the votes, so.
All right.
Thank you, Bob.
So, I would just recommend that, and I think it's fine, it may actually benefit the public who come and if we do have the town hall remodel and addition project at the next planning commission meeting, having the conversation as a separate agenda item about the town process, the new town process may actually work fine in terms of actually just explaining what we're going to be doing and answering any commission questions about it. I also would offer up, if you do have the staff report, commissioners, if you have any questions in the meantime, over the next couple of weeks, about the, the new town process for town projects, including the town hall remodel and addition project, please reach out to me. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about that as well. I just wanted to have that as an item before you so that you are prepared and fully understand what, what we're getting into with this process for town projects, so.
Regarding that, does anybody have any questions they would like to ask Adam?
No.
No.
Okay.
All right. Great.
All right, then let's adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Rich.
Yeah.